Good morning.
Good morning.
Andrea, Bill, John.
Good morning, good morning.
Good to see you.
Morning.
First on our agenda is the approval of the Citizens Advisory Committee rules, the discussion of the Citizens Advisory Committee rules or procedure. Who's on first?
Bill's gonna run this today.
Yes ma'am, that was distributed to the school. Ms. Tucker, the rules of procedure were distributed to the board at the last meeting for consideration and approval this morning. So after any questions from board members, we'd recommend approval of those rules of procedures.
Eric, where is?
Hi, Bill. Can you hear me?
Good. Yes, I sure can.
Now, while it's not part of the rules and procedures, it has been something that we have talked about. It's outside the rules. Well, and if the committee decides, we've talked about 10, 8, if the committee decides zero, or one, or two, or three, or some lower number, is that okay? Or is, although you haven't pinned down a particular number, you know, you've been kind of, but you've been within a range of 8 to 14, or 10 range. But if the committee came back and said, if they went to the extreme and said zero, or said 1, 2, or 3, a very low number, would you force them to do more? Or how would that process work if that had happened?
Yeah, the audio is a little bit hard to understand, but I think I understand the point. We do not restrict the number of people.
Are you all able to hear, Bill?
No.
Okay, so I'm just gonna jump in since, Bill, I think we had gotten a message before that said your bandwidth is low, so I don't know if you're on your network, or if you're trying to use the internet, trying to use the Bluetooth, but if you could get on your network, that might be helpful. Because right now, your screen is frozen. Or, Bill, you may want to call in, but I'm gonna go ahead and just jump in until I can hear you act more clearly.
Did you hear my question, Andrea?
Yes, sir, I heard it very clearly. And what we encourage, and don't forget, we are with the Citizens Advisory Committee members during all of their meetings, so we will be with them and we will try to kind of guide them. The point of them sending names forward to you are, these are the people who, based on the qualifications that you all set, meet that criteria. So for example, if somebody was, and I use the example over and over, a physics teacher for one year and decided they wanted to apply for superintendent, odds are that person would not meet the criteria that you all have put forward, and then your Citizens Advisory Committee would not move that person forward. So anyone, and the largest pool that we can have them look at as people who are qualified based on what you guys have determined you're looking for, is what gets moved forward. We, we would not be surprised if they only had three, because we would know that in advance, based on, we've reviewed all those resumes as well. We've never had that happen, but if, if they were leaving some members on the table that qualified based on what you all said you were looking for, we would certainly point that out to them. Also, if you look at the very bottom of the Citizens Advisory Committee rules or procedures, there's a notation, and it specifically says the school board may elect to add any applicant to the list, or remove any. So if they left some on the table that the board felt needed to be brought in, the board could say, "We accept your three, but we're gonna add these other two."
But we would have to, I can see you if you queue in, but we would have to agree as a board, not an individual member.
Correct.
Bridgette.
Thank you, sorry, I didn't know that we were accusing this, but, so, I think, and I understand that, and that was similar to last time, where if there was someone that wasn't on there, and we wanted to add them, etc., although I don't think that we practiced that, but I think those were the same procedures we had before. And I don't know, I think if there was, you know, I guess the question is, if there was typically, I guess typically, I think, I know, just using the last time as an example, it was around eight, I think, that was a, I don't know if we call them semifinalists, or what have you, that moved to the next round. And in the event there was a low number, the board, because, and I know I've had conversations with you guys individually, but in the event we don't have enough that come forward, the board can discuss what that next step is, because you could have one drop off, or whatever, and there's a, there's a kind of a sweet spot of how many, I don't know, are we calling them finalists, or semifinalists, that we, in order to kind of move to the next phase? Is that, do you understand my, so, so is that, would that be the board would make a decision, so we're not giving the committee a specified number, low or high, but then it would come back to the board, and then in the event there's a smaller pool, we need to evaluate what that means, the impact for us finding the right superintendent, is that?
Yes, yes ma'am. And what it might mean is that the three, let's, let's use the number three, because that's what Mr. Robinson put out there. It might be that those three are highly qualified, and could be great superintendents, and maybe you don't even need a semifinalist vetting, you just go straight to interviews. It might mean that, for whatever reason, you would indicate that while these people are qualified, maybe you wanted a larger pool. We would caution about some things at that point, because if, if, if somebody who's highly qualified applies, and then you extend the application pool, the message to those highly qualified people is, you don't see them as highly qualified, and then they're less likely to apply again, and more likely to withdraw. But we would have all of those conversations with the board, that would be the board's decision on how to move forward.
No, wait, Bridgette. Shirley.
I know that, I talked to all of the candidates I put forward on the committee and discussed with them what they're, what they need to be doing, and I referred them to the, our website, and told them to look under the superintendent's search, and to look onto, this is what the committee does, and this is when you're going to be meeting, but I told them that, you know, before the 29th, you've got to have that, that class you have to take on the sunshine laws, and then that you can start reading. I told them you can start reading those applications anytime now, and cautioned them that you can't talk to each other on the committee, you can talk to a board member, you just can't talk to a committee member. And, and I told them, we want you to come up with a semifinalist list between 7 and 11. I said, you know, each member doesn't have to come up with all 7 to 11, but you, the group of you have to agree on it. I maybe, I said, maybe you only like two of them, you put those two forward, and maybe another committee member might like another two, you know, so between the group of you that you would come up with between 7 and 11. And, you know, I don't know if others did, but, you know, I explain to my committee members what it is they're expected to do, and, and I think they understand that they're narrowing the field of what we've got, and, you know, I, I think, you know, we know how this process works, it's worked before, and, you know, I feel comfortable moving forward, that I have faith in our committee that, you know, because I've looked at the applications that have come in so far, and, you know, there's, there's a few in there that I already like, so, that I would definitely be looking at, so I, I mean, I'm not concerned that we're not gonna get anyone, I think we're gonna get somebody, because we've still got, what, another, over 10 days, another 10 days to be getting applications, and I would think the Florida people will be the ones that'll be coming in latest.
Well, we got three last night.
Yeah, so.
And Ms. Brown, I would also like to mention, Mr. Reichert and I are planning to hold, in addition to the sunshine law training, which has already been recorded with your attorney, and that's on demand for the members, Mr. Reichert and I are planning to hold, and we're calling it an orientation for the members. We did it just this week with Escambia County, every one of their members, there were 22 members of their Citizens Advisory Committee, every one of them showed up, we spent an hour with them, and we did exactly what you kind of described, we, we went through the whole overview, here's what a Citizens Advisory Committee is, here's the tasks that you're being asked to do, here's how the process is going to work, and we answered their questions. So John and I are looking, John, I know you were looking at a date for that.
Andrea, yes, and thanks for bringing that up. We are looking at the week of the 25th to have this orientation, and as soon as the board finalizes their advisory committee membership today, I would like to go ahead and do an introductory email to those committee members. I've kind of worked with Kathy, to make sure we have an email for each of these committee members, we'll do a quick introduction, notice them on the orientation that we'd like to have during the week of the May 25th, and I also, it is very helpful that I go ahead and send to each of the advisory committee members the resumes, or the packets that have been received to date, and at this point, we have 10, so in that introductory email, or following the introductory email, I will submit to them all of the packets that have been received to date, and ask them to kind of be reviewing and looking over and screening, just as Ms. Brown has mentioned, and they would have those at the point we have that orientation meeting, and it kind of catches them up, and then as application packets are received between now and prior to the deadline, I will immediately send those to Kathy, as we've done in the past recently, and then I will also personally send them to the committee members, so they can have them as soon as possible to kind of start preparing and looking at candidates to begin their evaluation.
And the meetings.
Bridgette.
So we're not doing this?
No.
Yep, sorry, okay.
That's what I did, okay, sorry.
You're not here.
Sorry to jump around, because I was gonna, kind of going back to my question, sorry to, was, am I, am I?
Go ahead.
Yes.
And I want to go back to something, Andrea, that you'd said, and I want to make sure this is clear, as far as the, if there, because there is a lot of unknowns, and there are unknowns in any circumstances discussed, we could have a catastrophic storm that could impact the, you know, the search, and that could happen any year, that could happen any year, I just, I want, but because we've talked about the, I know that as far as, you said something about being cautious, if, let's say, only, and I'm gonna use the number three, since that's been brought up, come forward, and we feel as a board collectively that that may not give us enough flexibility, again, because it's not so much just if we think they're the right candidate, we don't know what's on the back end of what their circumstances may be, if they're serving in a district, and then something occurs, and they all of a sudden have to pull out, so, etc., but we want to be cautious of that, so I, I would like a little bit more guidance in the event, because, because this is a more uncertain time than in past searches, that I want to make sure I clearly understand what guidance you're providing for the board, because if we ought to be careful so that we don't run into a situation where it's not so much that we didn't think they are qualified, again, we just want to make sure we have enough flexibility, because there's a lot of unknowns for each, for a number of circumstances. So would the board be able to add more, or extend the time? I, yeah, okay, okay.
The board could absolutely do whatever the board wanted to do, we just are obligated to caution you, so that you understand what potentially could happen if you did add more. And, and the likelihood, I mean, you guys have to look at it, and your obligation is to look at it from the board member perspective, and you want to have the widest pool possible, and you want to have the most flexibility available. But when, but when you're a candidate, and the candidate has applied, and the candidate has told their board, maybe they're a sitting superintendent, or maybe they're an assistant superintendent, whatever, and they've told their board that they've applied, and then the board says, "Well, these candidates, we need to put more in the pot," or "extend the deadline," or something like that, the candidate feels very vulnerable and exposed, and many times, we will see those, if boards extend, or try, I'm not talking about add names that have already been applicants, I'm talking about extending the application deadline to get more applicants. That's the piece that sometimes the message received by the candidates is, they're not happy with the pool, so there's no chance I'm getting it anyway, I'm withdrawing my name before any further embarrassment. That doesn't make it a fact, it just, I just have to caution you that that's the potential message that they will see.
Eric. Bill?
Bill, you're muted.
Can't hear you, Bill. Can't hear you.
Now we can.
Yes. I don't, I'm optimistic that we will have a sufficient field. We have had many people call, and they're waiting to go ahead and apply, and I think we're gonna get a very strong field, and I also agree that it's better, we have not had any of our searches, the need to go ahead and extend any search, and we don't recommend that, and I feel we'll be, we'll be fine with the field that we will have.
Okay, Eric?
Yeah.
Now bear with me, because what's happening here, you're both coming in as students.
Oh.
So. Yes, we are. Eric?
Am I coming in?
You're coming in as Bridgette. Well, I got, I got that.
Okay, so I'm just following up to my question, because I didn't quite understand the, the answer that you gave, Ms. Messina. So you, I was in the impression that you guys would vet out yourselves who was qualified, so if somebody applied who wasn't qualified, they wouldn't even get to the Citizens Advisory Committee, and then, and then the Citizens Advisory Committee, according to the rules and procedures, would identify a list of recommended candidates who meet the previously identified qualifications that are in need of the next superintendent. To me, I read that is, there's a pool of people who have met the qualifications, and then the Citizens Advisory Board comes up with a list of recommended candidates as a subset of that, of that group of people. So if you have 10 people who meet the qualifications, then the Citizens Advisory Committee doesn't necessarily have to have 10, but the list that they do will be, will come from that 10, so it's, I just want to make sure, clarification, because you made it sound like if those 10 people met the qualifications, the Citizens Advisory Committee would simply move forward those 10, and so I just wanted clarif, and Bill, I know you went on the, on it when, when that was spoken, so I just want a clarification that I am understanding it correctly. And, and Bill, just because you went in the, in previous, because the question is, is what happens if that number ends up being 2, or 3, or 0, or 4, which is, I understand you, you guys have never said a particular number, I'm only reiterating because Bill wasn't on the original call.
Yeah.
But, but you guys did give an indication, to use Bridgette's terminology, a sweet spot of numbers, call it 8 to 14 range. So I just want to make sure, clarification, that, that the Citizens Advisory Board does have that flexibility?
Correct, the Advisory Committee does have that flexibility, absolutely, but one thing we believe, Mr. Robinson, is that all of the individuals, whether they appear to be qualified or not, we want the Citizens Advisory Committee and the school board to have a list of everybody that has submitted an application.
Shirley.
Could I suggest, perhaps, in your introductory letter, emphasize again what our qualifications are, that we, we picked, and maybe include, or show them where the brochure is for Sarasota County, you know? I've told all of my people to go to, all of my, not my people, but my appointees, to go to the website and look at the, the application and all of those things, but perhaps if you either included the application, or at least reiterated what our qualifications were, that what we were looking for. And the other one is, making sure that the members will have the opportunity to meet via Zoom, even if some people want to meet in person. I would hope that we'd be able to have a blended, they would be able to have a blended meeting like what we are today, because one, one did give me concern about meeting, you know, if there's 25 people, that, you know, I said, "Well, we'd split you up," she says, "Well, even that," she says, "I want to do it by Zoom like you guys do," and, and I would hope that we'd be able to accommodate that.
Correct, Ms. Joe, we have talked with Joe, and he feels we can accommodate that, and what I'm planning on doing is actually being at the meeting on June 2nd, I will be on site there with Ms. Corcoran, and so, and then John and Andrea will be on the Zoom end of it, so we have both those options planned, and we feel comfortable with that, working in that environment.
Jane.
And John, do you want to speak to Mrs. Brown's question about sharing the brochure and things, I mean, that is part of our standard process.
Yes, ma'am, the introductory email, actually, I include a little sample of a screening guide, that should the committee members elect to use it, they're certainly welcome to, and I remind them that should they use it, it does become a public record, but that screening guide does have the qualifications, the minimum required qualifications that the board has set through previous meetings. I also refer them to the qualities that are contained in the brochure, attach a brochure, so we do provide them with the minimum qualifications that folks have to meet, and also the qualities which come through your brochure, so we do give them an overview of kind of where the, where the board has kind of set the bar at this point for them to proceed with their task.
Jane.
Well, I would just like to make a general comment, I, I think that the rules of procedure are really quite, quite well done, I, I think that, in all honesty, the transparency that we're exhibiting by having our committee look over every applicant is a good thing. I think that the list of people on the committee is really a good representation of our community, so I say to everyone who made those decisions, and invited certain people to belong, I think we've got a good representation of the arts, and, and the business community, and the construction community, and former teachers, and former administrators, and so forth, so I think it's a good cross-section of the community, and I think they'll do a fine job for us. There was one question that I had about meetings, and the meetings are the 2nd, the 9th for sure, and then a possible meeting on the 16th, correct?
Correct, yes.
And then we might have to have a special board meeting on the 17th?
Correct.
Would you explain that a little more, please?
Yes, John, do you want to take that one?
Yes, assuming that the committee requires three meetings, and their last meeting will be June the 16th, let's say they come up with eight candidates to send forward to the board.
I'm having trouble hearing him.
I'm sorry.
John.
Is this, this, but I'll turn the volume up some, is this better? Okay, assuming that the advisory committee at the, they need their third meeting, which will be June the 16th, and they come up with eight names to send forward to the board for your further consideration, our thoughts would be that if the board had a special meeting on June the 17th, which would be the, the day after the board, the committee, I'm sorry, selects their group to send forward, then the board could be informed of those names, they could peruse those names, and then discuss the options of which one of those candidates, or all of those candidates, might receive any kind of questions that the board would like to ask the candidates to respond to prior to the time that the board selects their finalists to bring in for interview. So that was our thought on potentially having a meeting on June the 17th, a special meeting of the board.
If the Citizens Advisory Committee completes their work on June 9th, then the board meeting on the 16th, that the board has, they could accept that list, or they could make those decisions, if they wanted to accept that list, or add, or delete, on the 16th. But because the meeting of the advisory committee is the same meeting as your board meeting on the 16th, that's why we would need the meeting on the 17th. We won't know that, of course, till after the Citizens Advisory Committee meetings.
Bridgette.
Thank you, and Bill, I think you just clarified for me, that was only, we're talking the 17th, only contingent if they go to that third meeting, correct? And then?
Correct.
We had, we have a, there was, okay, never mind, you answered my question, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Corcoran. We have found that the orientation that John and Andrea has done by Zoom has been extremely effective and helpful, and that, that the committee will be ready to go to work immediately on their, at their first meeting.
All right, any further questions? All right, let's move along then. Do you have the superintendent's search Citizens Advisory Committee?
Yes. Okay, advisory committee meeting, members, I believe the board is going to take action and select that committee by vote.
That is correct. But is there any discussion about it, because that's by the board members? Shirley.
At our last meeting, I had mentioned some names of people who had called in, that I wanted to add to my list, but when calling them and following up, I think Steve Largo, you put on your list, and one of them, Murphy, was actually going to be a candidate, so I took him off, and there was another one that didn't think she was going to be able to do it, so instead of them, I added Dan DeLeo, who headed, he's on our financial advisory committee, and he headed up the Committee for Better Schools, for the referendum, and the other one I added was Liam Ordinez, he, he was a former student, I think he's in college now, and he sent us an email saying, you know, "I'd like to be on the committee, I'm a former student, and you should have a student representation," so I, I called him, and he's going to be in town, he's going to be available, and so I put him on.
That's good.
Student, which student? Bridgette.
No, that's, oh, I see now, I understand. Well, so I want first, thank you to all the members of the community that are willing to serve on this, it's an important task, so I'm excited. I see a list here that has 24, are we short one person? I just want to make sure that, because we're adopting it this afternoon, I just want to make sure everyone, that this one, I'm sorry, this one that I'm looking at in the packet has 24, so this is not, it's the update, okay, so, okay, just to confirm, and then, and we're, again, approving the names and the rules this afternoon. Yep, okay, thank you.
Right, thank you.
All right.
Okay, our, our next item is a review and discussion of the semifinalist process, and what will happen then, and Andrea's gonna head this up, but as soon as the Citizens Advisory Committee completes their work, and has a list of people that they recommend for further consideration, we've had previous discussion with the board about providing information, additional information to the board, to help them make their finalist selection. So, Ms. Messina, if you'd like to discuss the options there, and what we, we want to move forward with on that.
Yes, and thank you, I spoke with each of you, I think it was two weeks ago now, on your sort of, the question that you thought would be most important to you, to determine whether or not you wanted to interview someone, so I've got five questions, Mr. Robinson, yours was still tentative, so I'll need you to lock in on that, but the, the bigger question that I have for the board today is, we discussed potentially having them answer the questions by video, we discussed potentially having them answer the questions in writing. Since there are five board members, and since there are five questions, I would actually support and put forward to the board for your consideration, that we would have two questions written, and three questions video, that way we get the best of both worlds, we find out their writing skills and ability to edit in a certain word limit, as well as their presence on camera.
Bridgette?
Yeah, no, I think you, and I think that was a happy medium, because I think there's pros and cons to both, just only making sure that whatever questions we choose, I'm assuming, would be, we choose which ones they're answering in camera, and which are on video, and which ones they're written, or is that subject to the individual? And I.
We can do it however you want to do it, I would think that by having the same two questions in writing for each candidate, there's a better ability to compare.
Okay.
So I want to keep it consistent.
I would, I, I agree.
Well, one of the things I would like is that we do keep it consistent with all of the candidates, that whatever questions we ask, we keep the same questions.
Correct, so that way we, so of the five questions, we need to determine which ones are on video, and which ones will be written?
Yes.
Okay.
And I would just, we would have a word limit to each of the written answers, and we would have a time limit for each of the video answers, because again, we want it all to be consistent, and also, the idea is, you guys don't have an unlimited amount of time for the semifinalists, you're gonna be spending a lot of time when we move forward into the finalist level, so by having them with no more than 10 minutes to answer three questions on video, and no more than 500 words, 250 words per written question, it gives you a very more than 500 words, 250 words per written question, it gives you a very definitive timeframe that you can then assess each one of these within.
I think that's a great idea. Eric, is this you?
Just to let you know, that question you and I talked about earlier, I'm locking that question in. If you need me to call you to re-remind you, I'll be more than happy to do that.
I have my notes on that, but I'd like to make sure I have it worded exactly as you wanted.
I can call you after the meeting then.
Perfect.
And I prefer, I don't know if throwing out there, I prefer, mine's a surprise, surprise, a budgetary financial question, so I prefer mine to be written because I want them to be able to do research and not do something off the cuff because mine's more technical in nature, but if we're throwing things out.
Bridgette?
Do we, I'm sorry, do we don't have the questions yet, right?
No, and the reason for that, Ms. Ziegler, is that once we give them to you their public information, so want the candidates to know what the questions are before we send them to them. Part of this challenge is, here are the questions, you have X number of days to complete and get the answers back to us, and if we send them out early, then they can start working on them. But in general, I will tell you, we have a question based on continuity planning, we have a question based on organizational culture, we have a question on referendum, we have a question on arts education, and we have a question on budget.
Okay, good. And so in a future date, we'll determine which ones are which, right? Because...
Unless you decide right now, I just heard Mr. Robinson suggest that he would request that his be one of the written ones. I don't know if anybody else has a strong feeling about those categories, which other one might be written. We could make that decision now by consensus if you wanted.
Let me know about the categories.
Yeah, that's my one.
Please.
One of the categories, okay, so there are five categories. One is financial, which we've already discussed. One has to do with arts education, one is the organizational culture, one is referendum experience, and one has to do with continuity planning for the district that they're leaving.
Okay. So can we decide now?
I...
Bridgette?
I can ask everybody's questions.
Right. No, I mean, I guess I could go both ways, but I think from the continuity planning, and again, looking at the other examples, but please chime in if you disagree, I would be fine with the arts education, culture, and referendum discussion being video, and, but I don't want to, if other ones want more listed, I was thinking from, my question was on the continuity and succession planning, and if it's written, they may be able to be more concise on those descriptions, but I, again, that's because I came up with that question, I don't want, I don't want to undermine anyone else's, if you guys had a more specific thing and would prefer yours written.
No, I'm asking you which category you would like.
Which continuity?
I would say, yeah.
Eric has finance, and so we have arts, organization, referendum, and continuity.
So I would say, I would, of those listed, I'd like financial written and the continuity written.
So you, okay. But who, do you want to take that question?
That is my question.
No, this is for which questions are answered by them.
I got it. There's two things, there's two parts to this. One part is that we have to select which category we would like to speak on, and the other is which we would like written and which we would like...
Bridgette already did continuity, Shirley did organization, you did arts, and Jane Goodwin did referendum, and I did finance. Am I a good guesser?
No.
No, that's not how it went out?
Because I haven't, I haven't...
Are we not just...
That's not, that's not right, Ms. Messina? No? Aw, man!
But the goal is to determine of the, it doesn't matter whose question it was, really, it's of the five, which one would be written, which one would be videoed. Am I understanding the question at hand? Okay. So I would, of those five, my non-vote vote is, I like the financial to be written because I think that would deem appropriate, and of the other fives, I think the continuity and succession planning would be another good one to be written and the other ones to be videotaped. That's my, that's my thought.
Okay, I can deal with that question, Shirley.
I'm fine with that. I don't, I don't really care.
Okay. So that's, that's it, Andrea. You got it?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay. So the logistics of that would be that as soon as the advisory committee meeting, the people that they recommend and the board approves those, those would be sent out by Mrs. Messina almost immediately to respond. So what's going to happen then is, on June 23rd, when the board selects the finalists, they would have the benefit of the advisory committee's recommendation, they would be able to look at the response to the questions in the video, we would already have gone into our reference checking process and doing the background checks through our law firm, and so, and then the board would also be doing their research. So you'd have all that information prior to the time that you select your finalists. That's, that would be our goal at this point.
Okay.
If that sounds fine there, I think we've reached consensus. The next item is talking about the finalist interview categories. And what we would like to do right now is ask the board to select one of these five areas that they would like to ask questions to the finalists about. Normally, the chairman would be the facilitator of this, and each board member would select an area, and then at some future date, we would be able to work with the school board members to talk about the questions they would like to ask. So if board members would like to select an area right now, we can start moving forward that process.
Hang on a minute. Didn't I, didn't I, isn't this something I already did, discussed with you, Andrea?
Is this something we already discussed?
Yes, you and I, based on those questions that you gave us?
This is different.
This is different.
This is the finalist, this is finalist interview categories. The other were for the so-called semifinalist group.
This is for the actual interview that the board will conduct with the finalists.
Can you talk, can you talk through how that looks? Is it in...
Wait a minute, Shirley is next.
Sorry.
Shirley?
Well, you'll be happy to know that that's my same question.
Okay.
Now, we'll have a chance to talk to each one of them individually and ask, but is this is the time when, if I'm remembering the last time, we're all sitting there and we've got one candidate in front of us, and each of the five board members asks a question?
Fourteen questions.
And we all hear the answer at the same time? Then we also have, where you've got that ABC or DE, where we individually each meet with each individual candidate on our own that we can follow up with, correct?
That's correct. This is Bill. During the group interview, which we will be able to have, we have to use social distancing or whatever is in place at that time, each board member out of these different categories would ask probably, have time, probably an hour and a half interview, to ask three questions. And so normally, what we like to see is that board member chooses an area of their interest, and they ask the questions, the same questions essentially, to all of those finalists that they're interviewing in person. If there are other questions they want to follow up on, then they can choose to use those questions when they meet individually on the next day with the board, with an individual candidate. So that's why we like to go ahead and organize it like this, and then we will work with the board to actually provide some questions that they might want to answer, or if the board has specific questions they want to answer in that category, that's fine also. And we will, at some point in the process, prepare a guide for the board members that has the questions that they eventually decide they'd like to go ahead and ask.
I don't see on our calendar, though, when that interview is taking place where the board together meets those three finalists, those three or four finalists together. I see where the ABC one, you know, on July 1st or the 2nd, and the day seems to be filled. When do we have, where we have all the candidates together?
John, do you want to comment on those, on the finalist interview process?
Yes, sir. Based on our timeline, we've set aside June 30th, July 1st, and July 2nd for the culmination of the onsite or virtual interviews with the finalists. We have, we've allowed for June 30th for any out-of-state candidates to arrive in Sarasota County on that Wednesday, July 1st. That will be the day that the board would have their, one of their board interviews with each candidate in the format that was previously discussed, where the one finalist is sitting in front of the five school board members, and then the five school board members kind of go through a rotation to ask the three questions from your assigned category that we're discussing right now. That would kind of be the process for that day, where you have your interview with each candidate. We certainly, a little later in the agenda, will discuss any options for maybe school tours or virtual school tours. We'll discuss that a little later. But the following day, which would be July the 2nd, that would be the dates that, the date that you would have your one-on-one interviews with each of the candidates, and that is kind of a round robin process where each board member is interviewing one of the finalists while the other board member is interviewing another finalist, and the other board member is interviewing another finalist. So that's kind of outlined in the time of the finalist interview schedules that we have to look at as item number six.
Eric?
Thank you.
I want to go to us having to ask everybody the same question, because if I use Sarasota County School District for an example of Mitzi, Laura, and Jody, and if I'm going to hopefully be able to do budget and finance, I think of Mitzi as more of a technical expertise person, and so if she was applying for the superintendent, I probably wouldn't be asking her technical budgeting questions or her grasp of the accounting process, I'd probably ask her more about her experience in the schools and operational side, and same with Dr. Kingsley. If she was applying, my questions to Dr. Kingsley after new financing budget would be different than if I asked Jody Dumas, because their interaction with the budgetary process is different. Jody's more about operations, how can we think it's more efficient, and Dr. Kingsley's thought is more of educational outcome, and I don't say that she's not concerned about the budget, but she wants, you know, her primary thought is making sure that the kids get the best education, and everybody else, you got to find the money so that I can achieve those goals. So they come at the same subject matter from three different ways, and they look at it from three different ways, and they all have a unique perspective, although they have a superintendent who has to take these conflicting interests, so to speak, and make sure that it adheres to the overall goal and mission of the district. But I would interview, I would ask different questions from each three to find out what complementary strengths they have in those other areas. So probably if everybody was superintendent, it wouldn't be like that, but if I had people who were associate superintendents who had a level of expertise in a particular area, I would ask some particular questions to see how much knowledge they have in those other areas. Is that allowed, or I have to ask everybody the same exact question?
Bill?
I'll start in the conversation on that. I think what we're saying, I think Mr. Hardy would recommend that essentially the same questions are asked to all of the candidates, but board members may modify those based on, or if a board member wants to add another follow-up to that question, that's acceptable also. I think what we're looking at is essentially the same questions that would be asked to all of the candidates, and I think that's just an HR practice, I think Mr. Hardy would, but I do believe you have the flexibility, as you said, in that. And you also have the one-on-one interview the next day, too, so you can modify or ask any details or anything that you would like to at that particular time.
I just want to follow up. You said essentially the same, you got to be very specific with me. You said essentially the same, and then you said flexibility. That doesn't line up with you have to ask everybody the same identical question. So could you just clarify for me? I'm a numbers guy, black and white, so I want to understand. If you give me wiggle room, I'm going to take it, so I need to understand, are you giving me wiggle room or you're not?
I'm saying you should have some wiggle room.
Oh, thank you very much.
Okay, Bill.
I think what I heard him say is we want to confirm that with your attorney.
All right, Bill.
I heard what I heard.
I know you did.
You did it, Bill. You gave him leeway to ask anything he wants to ask.
Yes, he did.
Bridgette?
So...
I don't think you meant to do that, Bill.
Very similar, in a similar sense, and this is my question before you had asked it, but I think it's, it's important to, because it's a very quirky way of interviewing someone in general, where you think we all have specified questions because part of it, you would want to have somewhat of a dialogue so that it's actually a meaningful discussion, because it's also our opportunity to hear different perspectives from our board members that we may not think of in our one-on-one with the superintendent. And so from an HR and exposure standpoint, which is what I'm, that's where I'm understanding this is where this is coming from.
Right.
And having, you know, and so, so I'm going to take this in a couple buckets. So first, we have, you know, item number four here on our agenda, we have five different interview categories, and we would have each board member lead point on those questions in a physical, when we'd be meeting like this, you know, the applicant would be sitting down there, and I, excuse me, I don't know which one, but I'd ask, you know, a series of whatever our numbered questions are, and then just everyone listens. And then another applicant comes in, and we ask exact same questions, but and I do agree with Mr. Robinson's standpoint of, there are different, when you review the applicant's past or experiences, there may be areas that I may need additional information for because it's not coming through on their, you know, in the paper form or the interview form of the video or what have you, to supplement what may be lacking where that may not come through in the predetermined questions. So that's my only worry, and I think even from the viewing public, like, why would I do do it this way? So then I go back to, okay, so what the legality is, and I will ask Mr. Hardy, oh, go ahead, Andrea, did you want to respond?
No, no, I'm just letting Caroline know I'm ready to respond when you're finished.
So, and I'll ask Art, because I'm curious, what risk do we have? Is it that we could potentially be harder on one candidate and that they would feel discriminated against? And so can you, do you have actual experiences of that? Because I see, I mean, trust me, I'm one that's going to want to try to protect that all day long and look at the risks, but as long as you're not veering on protected class questions, I mean, I'm curious as to what, I do want to keep us tight, and I think it's in the benefit for the board and the outcome, right? We don't want it to go all over the place, but I just, I think having clarity of what we would be trying to avoid would allow for a more clear guideline of how that would go and to make it effective at the end of the day for the interviewing process with us all working together as a board at that time, to hear the other perspectives. Does that, does that make sense, anyone?
Absolutely, it does. And one of the reasons that the questions are the same for each candidate is because, and I'll go to Bill's word, essentially the same for each candidate, is because we want the board and the community to be able to compare. So if everyone's asked the same question, whatever it is, then you can compare the answers and see, well, one of them, for example, I'll use Mr. Robinson's example, came from a curriculum angle, one of them came from a finance angle, one of them came from a facilities angle. You'll be able to compare the answers. That's one reason we do it. Another reason is to avoid exposure to risk, which is what you've correctly identified. And your question specifically included within it, have we ever had that happen? And I'm going to say no, but partly because we have these conversations in advance. However, in other states, and I think we've mentioned to you before that we participate, we're members of a group called the National Affiliation of Superintendent Searchers, we work very closely with other state school board associations, and they do superintendent searches as well. And so we learn from their mistakes, and one of the things that they have shared with us from more than one state is where a candidate has expressed that they were not treated fairly because, for example, they maybe didn't get a certain question that another candidate got, and they felt like because that question seemed to have weighed heavier on people's minds and they weren't asked it, that they were at a disadvantage in the interview because they weren't being treated fairly. The other thing I would tell you is, we try to time these interviews so that each board member gets, and Bill or John, you can help me, but let's call it 11 minutes per board member, and then there's a minute or two at the beginning for the candidate themselves to make an opening statement, there's an opportunity at the end for a closing statement. But there are some candidates whose answers are going to be much longer, so even though you're prepared, let's say, Ms. Ziegler, let's say you have three questions that you're trying to get in with each of the candidates, and you lay the ground rules out at the beginning, and you tell the candidates, you have 11 minutes to answer three questions from each board member. Well, if, and we've seen some verbose candidates, so they only get through two questions, they didn't get to the third question, but that's not your fault, that's because you gave them the ground rules and they didn't give the time opportunity. We've also seen some candidates who... We've also seen some candidates who are very succinct in their answers. And so then when the 11-minute allocation has not yet completed, you're already done with your three questions and then you can throw in a fourth. So part of it is contingent upon the interviewees' interaction with the board. And then sometimes what we try to build in at the end is maybe a two-minute follow-up from each board member. So something that that interacted between the candidate and it didn't have to be you, it could have been one of your peers, a question that they answered, but you want specifically more information on that one piece, you might use your follow-up time to say, yes, I have a question specifically on blah, 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 whatever it is. So we try to build in an opportunity for that as well. So there's room for the structured part of the interview. There's room for the candidate themselves to either leave time or take time. And then there's time at the end for follow-ups if if we're allowed.
Okay, that makes sense.
The other thing I would like to add to that, Andrea did an excellent job summarizing that, but after, that's why we like to have the one-on-one interviews the next day. Because if there's anything that the board member might have missed, they can ask that question individually to the candidate the next day. At the end of the second day, there should not be any questions in any board member's mind that they have not had an answer to.
And to be clear, those one-on-ones, you're not just asking about your category. You will have a question bank of probably, oh, I don't know, I think I have 140 questions or something. And you can choose whichever questions you want or add some of your own, certainly on what they said the day before or other interests that you may have. But within your one hour, one-on-one, that's your opportunity. You don't even have to ask if if Mr. Robinson's category in the public interview is finance. He doesn't even have to talk about finance in his one-on-one if he doesn't want to. He can talk about any of the other categories or interests that he has, questions that he wants to ask, as long as they're legal questions. And we have a little guide to keep you on the road for that.
Shirley.
Yeah, when we have the board interviews with the candidates, we've got 90 minutes with each candidate. And yes, we've got our five questions and what we wouldn't want is for, you know, question or one to keep following up and and take up all that time because they get the next day, they get an hour with each candidate, one-on-one. So that's where you get those other questions that you might have that might be specific to that individual candidate and where you're coming from. But I'm looking at the review, discussion, the categories, and I would like to see operations maybe brought out separately because, you know, the superintendent has to do the business and the finance part. So we want to make sure that they understand the budget because that might even say business and budget or finance. But I'd like to see operations perhaps as a separate one. And you've got A is personal leadership qualities and B is instructional excellence in leadership and then E, performance and accountability. I would like to suggest that we exchange B, the instructional excellence and performance accountability. So tell us what your excellence is and how we're going to rate you or how we're going to hold you accountable for that so that we can then have that operations on a separate one. And I don't know if anybody else feels that way, but I mean, I know how important it is for the superintendent to have an overall picture of, you know, the bus drivers, the purchasing and the construction part of it and all those other issues and HR.
Well, this is sort of like when we interviewed our Mrs. Tompkins over here on the left for her position, and I was concerned because we had to ask all the same questions. And I guess that's just the way we do it. But I think in my own mind, I can see the difference between the two. And I think those questions that we have asked, generally speaking, in an open forum of the same for every candidate, will give you some indication of the things that you need to spend that hour with them individually the next day. And I think back to the last superintendent search that we had, and we had a finalist who could answer all the questions and finalists who couldn't answer all the questions. And of course, that was an issue for me, if they couldn't answer the questions. So I had some some questions specifically about that to ask the next day. So I think this is going to be a good process and I'm really looking forward to it. And I think, I think it will all be handled, you know, very well. So that's my comment.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, no, Andrea, I appreciate, I think the, I understand the necessity for control because it could, I guess, and as for the time limits and such. And I think that, you know, when we look at the time block, if there is an opportunity to do that follow-up in that moment, because again, I think there's value in hearing what that, for everyone, each board member, what that follow-up would be, but it not being an endless amount of time. So I think you outlined that well. Going to Shirley's point, I agree, operations is incredibly important. It's interesting, I think like A, personal leadership qualities, and then there's D, board, staff and community relationships. You know, I don't know if that could be blended together because their personal leadership qualities and how that associates to the board, staff and community relationships if we were going to do, if we needed five categories, you know, before, the part about, I could say the same for performance accountability and how Shirley had said, maybe tying that in with instructional excellence. But, you know, I also think, but performance accountability goes with operations as well. So how, I, but I agree with her point of how do we construct that? And then my final question is, when do we make the, when we can figure out who does the categories, whenever we figure out those categories, but when do we make those questions? Because I like to tailor those questions after we have that finalist pool so that we know we can, if there are any areas of question that we can, we identify them after that, right?
Bill?
Yes, what I would suggest then is performance accountability, you actually can build into all of the areas. I'd suggest that last category then being operations, we could separate, we could make business, finance and budget. And then we could have operations as the fifth category. We'd build in performance accountability into all of the areas. And then on operations, we could put in parentheses, transportation maintenance, construction and HR and food service and those areas.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
If that's, if that's what the board would like to do.
Okay.
Does that sound okay?
So are we, are we starting to pick our categories? Because if we're going to pick our categories, I'd like that operations category.
Excellent. Okay, Shirley's got that one.
I like business and finance.
Okay.
Okay, Jane, what did you like?
I don't have a problem.
I don't either. Bridgette?
Um, I'm sorry. I, you know, I, I'll go with personal leadership qualities is such a, I'll go with A.
Okay.
Okay, is Art still on there?
Art?
That would be part of the community, I would think.
Probably, yeah.
Okay, so what's left?
Instructional excellence and then we have board, staff and community relationships.
Oh, no, board, staff and community relations.
Okay, Mrs. Zucker?
Yes.
And then Mrs. Goodwin would have instructional excellence, excellence in leadership.
Which is what I would probably put her for anyway.
Okay.
That's a well.
Excellent.
And Bill, when do we, so when do we define the actual questions? Is that after?
What I would do is, at this point, is start thinking about some questions in that area that you would like to answer. And then Mrs. Messina will get with you over the next few weeks. And there's plenty of flexibility up till the end to determine exactly which questions that, categories that you want to go ahead and ask. And we could even change that right up to the end. So there's flexibility. But well, well before that time, Mrs. Messina will have an individual conversation with all the board members to talk about what their priorities are for finalist questions.
Yeah, so what I'll do, just so you know, is I will pull together, because you did kind of change some of the categories, which is no big deal, but I'll pull together, let's start with Ms. Brown. I'll pull together a bunch of questions in the operations field and I will shoot them to her and she and I will discuss them so she can start looking through my questioning bank and come up with some questions of her own. I'll do the same with each of you in your categories. I'll create a question bank for you to use and edit as you see and however you want to do that. But then the final question bank that I will provide for you all, and I will provide the final question bank, probably like June 30th or something, which will be all of the questions in all of the categories so that when you have your one-on-ones, you have, you know, like I said, I think it's 140 or some odd questions in there that that can help you. You don't have to use them, but our goal is to provide you some, a resource that may be helpful to you.
Shirley.
Well, Andrea, mine would be, what experience do you have in these different areas and your, your, your performance accountability?
You can do that when you work with her.
Yeah.
She's going to do it anyway. Okay, all right.
Our next, thank you very much. Next, review and discuss the process for finalist selection. And John, you, we started talking about this a little bit, but why don't we summarize that and go right into the finalist interview schedules for just discussion at this particular time?
Hey, thanks, Dr. Vogel. Yes, I provided earlier three samples of our interview schedules and we spoke briefly about them a few minutes ago. You have a sample, should the board like to have three finalists for interview. You have a sample outline for four finalists and a sample outline for five finalists, depending on the numbers of which the board brings in to interview or identifies as finalists for interview. Just a few comments about the schedules. And I'm just going to kind of speak from the schedule that has three finalists, just a random selection here. But again, the candidates arrive, out-of-area candidates arrive on June the 30th from, if there are any out-of-district candidates. On that Wednesday, July the 1st, there's an opportunity to have all the candidates arrive at the district office at around 8:00 a.m. And there's an option to have maybe a light continental breakfast before the day begins. We, at that point, would move into the board interviews with each finalist. The board interview is scheduled for an hour and a half for each candidate. So as you can see from this sample that should the board go with three finalists and they would begin their individual interviews at 8:30 with candidate A. And then we would need to kind of talk about the options for any type of school, community tours. If you recall in the last search, we did have hosts or ambassadors that kind of took the candidates who were not interviewing with the board around to tour some schools and community sites. During that tour, there were a couple of schools that maybe they would stop at, visit, and then as they go from one of the stop sites to another stop site, they would kind of do a pass by of other locations that the board wanted the candidates to see. Certainly, that might not be a feasible tour format, but that is something that certainly we would want to discuss to kind of get the board feeling on those tours. Also, which will be an item for kind of discussion, would be any opportunities for that Wednesday evening to have the community meet the finalists. If it's some kind of options through a virtual meeting where maybe candidates can answer a series of questions for the public to observe, that would be an option to look at instead of the standard, you know, meet and greet in-person receptions for the community.
John?
After the.
John?
Yes, ma'am.
If I might? You're talking about taking candidates around to the schools. We're not having summer school. So school's not going to be in session.
Right.
So I don't know, is you just going to take them around to see the outside of a building because it will not be open?
Right. Well, and we understand that it is kind of a different time, but if, you know, whatever the board's thoughts on to have some avenue about which the candidates could get a feel for the district, I will say, as happens in the majority of our searches, that your out-of-area candidates are more likely than not going to come in. And on that arrival date, that Tuesday, they are going to be touring the county. You know, in one of our current searches, which really doesn't end until the end of June, there are a couple of candidates who have already been to those school districts. They've toured the area, they've picked up chamber information, they've got Google Maps and they're viewing schools. So a lot of these candidates do come in and do a lot of homework prior to this. But the options for what would kind of a process be to familiarize out-of-area candidates with the district, certainly we would want to discuss what options would be available.
Okay. Bridgette?
And then moving on to the Thursday.
Before you, hold on, John, hold on one sec because I want to stop you there. Where, I know in past conversations, it seems, and I could be wrong, so correct me, but majority of your searches take place over the summer because they start, is that accurate? The majority of your superintendent searches take place before the school year starts or no?
No.
So, okay, so of the ones that have taken place over the summer, do they go and look at the schools? I mean, I understand that we're going to, but is that a practice that is common and I, for the, for familiarizing them? I think to Caroline's point is, if there's nothing going on there, but they're not from the area, they can see our facilities, but, you know, can you, pre-COVID discussion, just I wanted to get a sense of what you typically do. So I understand the value there.
Right. I think the one that I do recall, the sites were kind of their flagship schools, maybe flagship programs. If it's, you know, a vocational technical center, for an example, there's a lot that out-of-state area candidates could kind of glean from just walking through a facility that might be one of your tech sites or a magnet program, probably in nursing to see the facilities that are available for those programs. So while it certainly isn't, you know, the same maybe value where you have kids being taught and students in action, but they do get a feel for some of the programs and again, the, the facilities that are available in the school district.
Well, we still have a month. We still have a month before we have to decide this. So I think, I understand what you want, Shirley.
Right.
I would like to suggest that, yeah, well, we can't go to the schools, but I think it might even be more important that we could take them out to the facilities department. There's a lot going on, I mean, I mean, they have an idea of what we're doing and at least drive-by-the-bus terminals and and there's those conversations in the cars you can have, oh, by the way, we also have this school, you know, for the gifted, we've got a school for the, you know, ESE students and, you know, some of those we can have verbally, but I think perhaps even showing them, you know, our wonderful facilities department. That's a great tour in and of itself. I mean, and plus, you know, even around the landings facility. I think there's plenty of things to show them in that hour and a half, you know, that it, you know, beyond, here's a school and here's the principal, you know, I think there's other things that we can show them that A will highlight what we do, but B also give them an idea of the enormity of the tasks they've got in front of them. Because these are people they're going to be working with.
I'd like to remind everyone that we're on a time schedule. We're already a half an hour over this time period. Mitzi?
I just wanted to let everyone know that once the number of finalists have been determined, we can determine what kind of a tour to provide them.
Yeah, it's too early.
Whether it's to show them the new football stadium with their official tour for the new hospital and the new rubberized tracks, whether it's to show them the work being done at time view and again, the school for the gifted, or ESE centers.
There is some small adult classroom work that's going to be, being conducted beginning in June for adults to continue to get their certification areas. So again, we can, we can do those types of things. So depends upon the number of finalists that you actually choose as to what. So depends upon the number of finalists that you actually choose as to what kind of tours we'll have time to provide.
Dale?
Let me suggest that Ms. Corcoran and I get together and talk about some different concepts of tours and how they would fit, and perhaps, depending on what the guidelines are for, you know, well, she'll still probably have social distancing, so we might have to look at different options on that, but I will get with her, and we'll come up with some options for board future consideration. We just wanted the board members to be thinking about that. And also, I think, John, we're going to have to look at the same options for that evening event, whether we host a webinar for the candidates, because it's doubtful that we'll be able to have a community event like we've had in the past.
Correct, correct. And, Madam Chair, in interest of time, moving forward quickly, on that Friday schedule, it's laid out to where you have an hour each for each candidate. You'll kind of see how it flows with each of the samples, three, four, five finalists. And the only thing maybe for discussion or consideration, just for the board to think about, would be that, you know, lunch on that Thursday, July 2nd, typically it's better to have that onsite if we're having these interviews at the facility, and usually districts consider some organization to kind of sponsor that, that lunch and host that lunch.
All righty.
Okay, that's just a general review of the timelines. Any questions or comments on the timeline, I'm sorry, on the interview schedules?
Not for me, no. You've done a very good job. Thank you very much, all three of you. Excellent, well-prepared.
One more item, just, I think we talked a little bit about this. John, just comment on the timeline, and then we wanted to make sure the board is aware we may need that board meeting on June 17th, and if they could, you could just tentatively put that on your calendar.
It's on my calendar.
Good.
It's there.
Thank you very much. I think we're making a lot of progress, and we appreciate the support and suggestions from the board.
Thank you. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next in our agenda is Sky Academy, I believe. Right? Yes.
So Denise, Dr. Cantalupo, and a representative from Sky Inglewood, I believe, will be on the Zoom meeting. Oh, or three. Four. Where's Denise?
This is, is this Sky?
Should I not?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Can you hear us?
Good morning.
Would you introduce yourself, please?
Hi, I'm Patty Forseeder, I'm the Assistant Principal at Sky Academy.
Kathy Castellano, current Board Chair.
Hey, Kathy.
John Bailey, Principal of Sky Academy, Inglewood.
I don't know who you are, so you'll have to identify yourself. Just keep talking.
Oh, there's Denise. Okay, I can't--
I'm Carol Flaherty. I am the ESE liaison and school counselor.
Okay.
I'm Anne Smith. I am a teacher at Inglewood Elementary and current board member.
I'm Crystal Burrit. I'm a mother of one of the students and a board member.
I'm Heather LeBeau. I'm a certified public accountant and a current board member.
Thank you. Welcome. Who would like to start?
Denise, do you want to kick it off? Is she muted?
She's on mute.
Who would like to start?
Okay, I'm here. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes, Denise.
Okay, thank you.
It's Denise Cantalupo.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Good morning, members of the board, Mr. Hardy, Superintendent Corcoran. Today, we're here because Sky Academy is seeking a 15-year renewal term of their charter contract. As the charter sponsor, renewing charter contracts is the responsibility of the Sarasota County School Board. As authorized in Florida statute, the sponsor may choose not to renew or may terminate a charter on three grounds, four grounds. Failure to participate in the state's education accountability system, failure to meet generally accepted standards of fiscal management, violation of law, or other good cause shown. The charter's renewal process consists of a program review of the following areas of accountability. Business operations and fiscal management, student performance, compliance with federal and state requirements, and adherence to the terms of the charter contract. The charter, District Charter Renewal Review parallels the process used to initially evaluate charter school applicants. To date, the following steps were taken, or following steps were taken for the renewal process. Sky Academy, Inglewood submitted their renewal application in October. The district's charter review committee met on November 12th to 21st, and then again on January 30th, to review the school's application and review results of routine annual monitoring conducted by the district and other documented evidence of school compliance with requirements and policies. Prior to spring break, the Office of School Choice and Charter Schools provided school board members a summary of the committee's findings and recommendations of our review. So we're here today with the principal and the governing board members to present their request for a charter renewal for 15 years. And the school board may ask questions or request additional information from a Sky Academy governing board or district staff. And then, on June 2nd, the board will vote to approve or deny the Sky Academy-Inglewood charter renewal. If the board approves the renewal, the new charter contract will be negotiated with the charter's governing board and voted upon at the June 16th meeting. The new term of the charter contract will take effect on July 1. Katrina Ward should be here with us, and you've just met the principal, John Bailey, and the other board members, so I'll leave it to them to present some information, and then the board may ask, the board and the board members may ask questions. So we can begin--
Thank you.
John, would you like to begin?
I would love to begin. Good morning, everybody. I am so glad to be here digitally. I know that I would much rather be there in person. It's been kind of an interesting 2019, 2020 school year. Nobody would have expected that this is the way that we would be ending this year, but we're going on. This is our year in operation in Inglewood, and the past three years, we've been an A-rate school. In our second year, we were recognized by the governor, Governor Rick Scott, as the 75th best middle school because we made tremendous gains in that particular year, and that continues to be one of our big focuses at our school. As you know, we are operated by the YMCA, and we have a partnership with the YMCA, and it's part of who we are as a school. We infuse health, wellness, and nutrition into our daily activities, and it's that partnership, the Y, that allows us to do that. Our students come to us, and they get two PE classes a day. We have a chef who provides nutritious meal to all of our students every single day. And then within the classrooms, we focus on various different brain breaks and physical activity breaks to recharge students and to give them that focus that they need, because we've found that middle schoolers, it's a unique age time period, and they really do need that time to use energy and to burn some things off, and it allows them to focus a lot better on their class activities. So, we have been designated as a high-performing charter school by Florida Department of Education. We offer programming, the same classes as the traditional Sarasota County schools. We have a STORE program, which is our advanced program here at Sky, in which currently 80% of our students are taking Spanish, the high school Spanish level class. 50% of our eighth graders are currently in algebra, the high school algebra class, and we have a few students this year who are now taking geometry. We are one-to-one with computer students in our classes, and therefore, we have a digital certification program. Last year, it was based on multimedia, and it's been a very successful program. 159 students participated, with 94% of them earning industry certifications for us last year. And this year, the numbers are even higher as far as participations. More to the advancement and achievement at Sky Academy. We tend to, we like to take our kids on various different trips within our STORE program. Our sixth graders for three years now have participated in the Disney Educational Program, where we take them, they go on the trip, they go, and they learn about various different programs that Disney has to offer. It's a tremendous team-building project within the sixth-grade class. They build those partnerships and those friendships that'll last throughout their rest of their middle school career. Our seventh, eighth-grade STORE advanced students, we have taken them to Baltimore and Washington two years ago. Last year, we took them to Boston, we walked their Freedom Trail, we, you know, walked in the steps of our founding fathers. And this year, we were supposed to go to DC again, but unfortunately, COVID got the better of us, and we weren't able to do that for our students. Each time that we take these trips, that we step off campus, we make sure that we visit colleges. We think that it's important that the students step on to a college campus and just get the exposure, get the understanding of, this is what college is like. So we've gone to Flagler University, University of Tampa. Last year, when we were at Boston, we visited Harvard, you know, mainly so that we can say that we went to Harvard. We, you know, this year, we went to UCF with our sixth graders, and had we been able to go to Baltimore and Washington, we had planned to visit the University of Maryland. More than just academics, we also compete in nine different sports throughout Manatee and Sarasota Counties. We compete against 12 different schools. We believe that the successful student not only has the tools necessary to achieve in the classroom, but can learn teamwork and what it takes to win on an athletic field. Embedded within our PE program, we've taught swimming. That's our partnership with the YMCA. We take the students to the local pool, and we do swimming. They learn about strokes, they learn about confidence in the water. Being part of the YMCA provides these wonderful opportunities for our students. And as far as the community impact, we do a lot within our community. We took our students to world rowing competitions a couple years ago. Each year, we walk in the Inglewood Pioneer Day Parade. We have a spring carnival for the entire Inglewood community, which unfortunately this year was postponed. We do beach cleanups, we do beach field trips. We participate in our Grad Venture eighth-grade celebrations, which are at Universal Studios. A few years ago, we raised over $1,200 from Puerto Rico, sent 150 pounds of school supplies to Houston after their hurricane, and this fall, raised over $1,000 for the Bahamas. We've built a school garden, host spirit weeks, school dances, support our local elementary schools, and work to be involved in the local community. We're active members with Inglewood Chamber of Commerce. We have in the past hosted the Inglewood Pioneer Day dances for local teenagers. And we work at the Sunshine Rotary Club each December, and this past December, we packed over 12,000 meals for local families in need. We also partner with local churches and community organizations for our back-to-school backpack drive, in which over 500 students receive free backpacks, haircuts, school supplies, and clothes. And each year, we induct about 20 students into our National Junior Honor Society, as well as administering the PSAT to all eighth graders free of charge. More than all of this, though, regardless of what we do in the community, or how successful our students are academically, what makes Sky Inglewood so successful is our amazing staff and teachers. Not a day goes by that our teachers are not working with students before and after school. When the last bell rings each day, our teachers don't walk out, they walk to aftercare, they begin tutoring, they begin working with remediation and acceleration, and they work on developing clubs and activities that engage students. We know our students very well, we are a small, family-friendly school. We care for our students, we embrace them as individuals and unique learners, and on top of that, we encourage community involvement and parent involvement. We understand that the success is not just in the hands of the school, but is a collaborative partnership between home and school. And with that, I'm going to introduce our board chair, Kathy Castellano, and she's going to discuss more about our community engagement parts.
Good morning, everyone. To echo John, I always like to, if I'm on a board, to start with what the mission statement is, and if I may quote Sky Academy's mission statement. The mission of Sky Academy is to promote pre-adolescent student achievement through a rigorous infusion of wellness and fitness strategies into the learning and mastery of the Florida Career and College Readiness Standards to enable students to live a healthy and productive life. As a long-term resident of Inglewood and this year's board chair, I would like to say that Sky Academy has fulfilled the need for a Sarasota County middle school in Inglewood. As the only middle school in Inglewood, we provide an alternative to families of middle-aged students versus attending a school outside of our county. As a Sarasota County resident since 1976, raising two students throughout school, I'm sorry that I did not have this alternative option for education, fitness, and well-being at that time. Teachers at Sky, as well as teaching academics, teach students to make healthy and positive choices. Sky provides two PE classes daily, keeping fitness in their schedule for well-rounded students. With our current COVID situation and our eighth graders missing out on a formal graduation ceremony, staff and teachers at Sky have gone out and placed congratulations T-signs at the graduating students' homes, helping them to make them feel extra special. I would also like to mention that Sky Academy is partnering with the Rotary Club of Inglewood, in which I am a member, in bringing awareness of Red Nose Day this Thursday, helping to pass out flyers outside the school as they pass out food to children in the community during this time of need, as they have done every day since this COVID has started. And I believe we have passed out almost close to 200 meals a day. I thank you for this time, and defer back to John to introduce our next board member.
Thank you. I'm going to introduce Heather LeBeau. She is a board member, and her daughter was one of the original students to join Sky back in 2015.
Thanks, John. Yeah, my daughter was a sixth grader the very first year Sky Academy opened its doors. She, the school itself did have a rocky start, but John addressed all of those issues before I even had a chance to address them with him. The second year, they completely overhauled, like he said, their math program was phenomenal. I believe that the mission of the school helped them address issues with my daughter specifically, to allow her to move into their STORE program in that inaugural year. She has currently B average at Florida Southwestern Collegiate High School. Next year, she will be dual-enrolled at Florida Southwestern College, and I believe that it's because of Sky Academy's ability to address the needs of each individual student that she is where she is.
Thank you, Ms. LeBeau. I'm going to now turn to Anne Smith, who's a current fifth-grade teacher at Inglewood Elementary School.
Hi, good morning, and I wanted to start by thanking you for this opportunity to come here and speak on behalf of Sky Academy today. As Mr. Bailey said, I am in my 15th year as a Sarasota County employee, 10 years as a fifth-grade teacher at Inglewood Elementary, and I have been here since, in fifth grade, since Sky Academy has opened. And since I firsthand had the opportunity to really get to know the school, because I have a lot of parents and teachers coming to me and asking me what my opinions are, where they think that I think their students should go. And before, they only had, you know, one of two opportunities, depending on where they lived, either LA Anger or Venice Middle. And now that we have this opportunity of Inglewood Sky in Inglewood, it has been awesome for me to give them that opportunity as well, because there are some families who really like the idea of the smaller schools. The, I'm sorry, I'm so nervous, I can talk in front of my students all the time, but when I have adults in front of me, I get so nervous. But it's been really good for me to be able to join this board. It's my first year on the board, and so I can, I've had the opportunity to visit Venice Middle, I have the opportunity every year to go and visit LA Anger, and now I have the opportunity to see firsthand what the Sky is all about, so I can give that honest feedback to those families who come to me and ask. I should let you know that of my fifth-grade class this year, 14 out of 20 of my students will be attending Inglewood Sky, and that's pretty consistent in the other classes as well. I also would like to point out that my principal has chosen to send both of his students to Inglewood Sky, so it's obviously a well-respected school at Inglewood Elementary, and it's just an awesome place. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I'm now going to go to Crystal Burrit. She has a current child enrolled at Inglewood, at Sky Academy-Inglewood.
Good morning, everybody. I have a seventh grader at Sky Academy. She started last year. She is a, she has been diagnosed with ADHD. However, we do not have an IEP for her or a 504. But the care and concern that has come from the teachers has been right on her level. They have taken an initiative to find out how she learns, what works best for her, and they are by her side every single minute of it. During the COVID-19, where we've had to do at-home education, it's been very challenging, but I have been able to email any of her teachers right away, and they respond immediately to her care and her, the needs that she has. I also want to mention that I worked for Sky Academy about five years ago. I was hired at the Venice Campus as the administrative front desk, and so I got to see firsthand how Sky operates and how it operates with the YMCA. And I could not wait to send my kid there. I can't wait, I have twins as well, I have seven-year-old twins, and I can't wait for them to experience it. I believe in Sky, I believe in their mission, the staff, and just the administration is great to work with.
Thank you, Ms. Burrit. And last up, we have Nick Turza. He is our board member and he's a Sarasota County Sheriff's Officer.
Hey, good morning. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right. Yeah, last year, I was the school's SRD, and I had a good opportunity to be involved a lot with the school, and I still continue to be involved with the school through the Sheriff's Activity League program that I help run out there. And I was able to see the school grow over the last couple of years, and it's really been a great opportunity. I've seen it improve immensely with our safety and security measures, the adding of, you know, cameras, the front-way entry, and as well as other staff members that are really there to help guide the students. But it's a great school, and this is why I want to be a part of it.
So this time, that is the end of our prepared remarks, and I defer back to the school board.
Thank you. Could you touch on or speak about your ESE program, how you identify, how you place, and what you have in place for them?
Yes, and I'm actually going to let our school counselor and ESE liaison, Cara Flaherty, speak about that.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having us here today. I'm happy to be here. My name's Cara Flaherty. I am the acting school counselor, ESE liaison at Sky Inglewood. So regarding our procedures as to how we accept and work with students who have ESE needs, is that we follow Sarasota County policies. So everything that we do is the same thing that we do, or the other schools in Sarasota County School District does do. So upon students registering or applying to Sky Academy, if they have a 504, if they're an ELL student, or if they have an IEP, we review all of those plans. So part of my responsibility as that is, I will review their services, their accommodations, their reevaluations to ensure that we will be able to meet that student's needs and services at our school. And upon that approval, if we are able to do so, I then will meet with the team regarding what that placement looks like. So at that point, we put together a schedule, and we meet, then we meet, obviously, on an annual basis, in order to make sure that we're meeting those students' needs, reviewing IREDA scores, reviewing FSA scores, and reviewing their progress in their classrooms as part of that.
Thank you. Shirley.
My question also goes to, you know, pages three to five of the summary that talks about the ESE. Now, they noted that one of the problems was, is that you had a new employee, and I would imagine that's you, Cara, that was hired as a ESE liaison, the ESOL liaison, and the school counselor. Having a small school has a lot of advantages, you know, for the students. It's a small community. I believe it's even smaller than the elementary school. So that has its advantages, but it also has its disadvantages in that some people have to wear many hats. And at the time this was written, in March, it said that the school counselor was not a certified ESE or ESOL. I don't know if that's corrected. And also, there was issues when you were first hired, that you weren't connected to the district so that you could get the training that is offered. Has the rules and procedures been corrected so that another person that would get hired would get connected right away? And are you in line to get the ESE and ESOL certifications? And, you know, and then that parent that spoke previously that said her child is ADHD but does not have an IEP, and I have, you know, what is up with that? Just in general, please.
Go ahead, Crystal.
Sorry. For us personally, we've, we've had our kids in really good schools, Inglewood Elementary she came out of, and she does well in school, and the teachers have always made it, have always accommodated her without having to have the paperwork behind it. We didn't, we didn't necessarily feel that she needed to have something specified as long as the school was good. And we've had a really great experience with elementary school and middle school, where she gets the accommodations that she needs to help her succeed without having to have it in writing. It was just a personal choice for us.
Thank you. And perhaps the principal can talk about the changes in the policies and procedures, and if your employee will be getting those certifications.
Yes, Ms. Flaherty has currently signed up to all the tests and to get all the certifications done.
Great.
And when she first transferred over, because she came to us from Sarasota County Public Schools, she was at Triad last year. And so I think it was just a lapse of how things transferred over, because she's always been part of this system, she's always been part of those PD systems and been, it was just a matter of getting her access to the proper platforms. And we did that fairly quickly, and now I know she's in Rich, she's in SIS, and she's attending those monthly ESE meetings and those monthly counselor meetings, and she's very much involved in what the school district is doing and then bringing those into our school.
Thank you. And what I'd like to do, I mean, and when we go forward with a 15-year contract, that, you know, we follow up and make sure that those things are happening and that those things have been corrected. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. And I will say, congratulations to your success. I think you guys have had a very successful track record, and I know it's not easy. And something Ms. Brown said, I also have questions on the ESE areas, but to Mrs. Brown's point, there is benefits of being small, but there are some challenges, particularly operationally. But at the end of the day, the mission is to serve those students. And so I guess my question may be more specific. I've read through and I've highlighted a couple of areas, but one piece is, even if, what was mentioned earlier, but it's even highlighted in here, is that students are not accepted to Sky Academy if their IEP services and accommodations can't be met. And my question is, just if a parent's choosing to go to Inglewood, Sky Academy, sorry, and they want to go there for a certain reason. So can you talk to me about what that looks like? Because I know there's a lot of discussions, and sometimes there aren't supportive services that you probably financially can provide, but when you see, if you have an influx or a certain amount of families that are students that need to be served in that way, and parents are choosing to go to your school, do you ever evaluate what, I mean, how to bring on and be able to serve those families? Can you just divulge a little bit more detail into that?
Yes. So we, when people apply to our school, very rarely are we actually turning students away, because we can accommodate the vast majority of IEP and 504 plans. The only times in which we're not able to are those who have severe disabilities and need full-time one-on-one aides to be with them all day long.
Okay.
Other than that, we, we've had aides who have gone in and out of classes. Our counselor goes in and out of classes to provide push-in and pull-out services. We have a full-time intensive reading teacher who has a flexible schedule, who does pull in and push-in and pull-out services, and to where we provide those supports. But if student does need a one-on-one aide with them all day long, this just isn't the best fit for them. But in the past, it's been, in five years, maybe two, three students that we've had to turn away because of that.
Okay, thank you. No, it just, it stood out to me, and I wanted to make sure I clarified that, because, okay, thank you.
Jane? Well, I have a number of questions, and I'm going to start at the top. How many students come out of Charlotte County versus Sarasota County?
We have about 75 to 80% of our students are from Charlotte County.
Okay. And who does the tutoring for your students in the afternoons? I mean, teachers are pretty tired at the end of the day, they want to go home. Do you have teachers that are actually required to tutor, or, you know, how is that accommodated? I noticed the emphasis on tutoring the afternoons.
Our math team provides three days of tutoring every, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday after school. They just do it because that's what they do, they've always done that. They provide that for students who are scoring ones and twos and FSAs. Our algebra teacher, she actually provides a Thursday remediation program as well, focused purely on algebra, those kids who need a little extra help. Our after-school enrichment program is run by our intensive reading teacher. She runs that every Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday as well. And none of these are paid positions. They are done because the teachers want to do that, they want to help support our students. We then also have a paid aftercare program. The aftercare program is run by a teacher, and then it has some paid staff members, most of them are high school kids or college kids. And as they are working with the individual students on their homework, they provide additional support and help as well. But the vast majority of our tutoring that gets done by staff is done because that's what they want to do, and part of the expectation of teaching here is that you will provide a little extra time, you will provide a little extra support. And they seem very willing and happy to do it, which is why we found success with our scores and our students really making great gains every single year.
In terms of ESE, so you're able to commit and tell us that your ESE worries are over because you have a certified teacher and you have an acting supervisor at this time, but you will have all that covered and completed by the beginning of the next school year?
Yes, once they allow all those tests to resume, because I kind of covered through a little wrench in some of our testing processes, once that is resolved and they can get a test in date, all of it's going to be solved and fixed. In fact, they've, Ms. Flaherty has actually already signed up for the test. It's now just when that testing allotment date is going to be there.
I look at middle schools, and middle schools, of course, are, you know, prickly for our students, because they're quickly changing and moving forward and growing into semi-adults or whatever. And I know that a lot of parents love the smaller class size, but you've talked about increasing your class size. I hope that there won't be any questions of raffling off computers or any of some of the other things that I know we've had happen in the past, because that's not allowed. But the sports, and that's great to have sports, but you've always had a mission of why do we, why do you want to come to Sky Academy? And it's been because of fitness. Yet, I've never been able to see any data that's been collected over the years of Sky Venice or Sky Inglewood that states any data points about fitness. I asked Ken Majulowski about this once, and it was sort of like a the dog ate my homework routine, because he said that the person that originally started taking care of that was, had moved to Australia or something. Do you keep statistics on that aspect of students' life, and is that something that you could share with us?
Yes. Our PE department does routine assessments on the student's physical fitness. They do it at the beginning of the year, whether it's miles or Pacer tests, push-ups, sit-ups, and then they routinely, on, I want to say it's a monthly basis, reassess and track the student's progress. And that's something that I can easily get from our teachers and send your way. But we do collect that, and we do find just anecdotal evidence is when you see some of our sixth graders coming in, and then by the time they're eighth graders and they're being promoted across the stage, they, their bodies look different. Not only have they grown because they've gotten older, but we, we had this one student this year who I want to say has lost, I want to say did 20 pounds. His body mass index has, as a sixth grader coming in, has drastically changed just because of the two PE fitness classes a day. And the parents have been extremely appreciative, actually, his grandparents have been extremely appreciative, and the kid has a new sense of who he is and new confidence, just because, you know, if you're coming into school as a sixth grader and you're overweight, you're probably self-conscious. And he has made a huge transformation just in the seven months that we were in school from two PEs a day and his active participation and the diet that we do with the school lunches. It's been tremendous. But I can gather all that evidence and data from our PE department, and I can send it your way very quickly. We do collect it, and we do track it.
Well, I think you ought to play it up more. I think that this is a time when, you know, students are very sensitive, and, you know, if they develop good habits with you, that is something that certainly would be a highlight. You don't have the music programs and some other things that the other middle schools have, and this is your niche. So I would hope that you'd promote that more. And in terms of safety and security, are you still doing a contract with the sheriff or a sheriff's deputy at your site?
Yes, we actually, just last week, resigned our contract with the Sarasota County Sheriff's Office to have an SRD here again for the third year.
Well, it's good seeing, Mr. Bailey, and, you know, good luck this next year. We're all going to have, I think, a new normal.
Thank you. We're looking forward to the normalcy as well.
Eric?
Hi, thank you. I just want to say a couple of things, and then I have some questions. I want to, I wanted to recognize that Heather is a very well-respected CPA in Inglewood, so I just want to welcome her. And obviously, I know Chairwoman Castellano for about 20 years. We served on the United Way Board back in the day. She was nine. I, too, was very concerned about the ESOL issue, and I expressed my concern to Ms. Castellano and Mr. Bailey, and they were able to send me over some information to alleviate my fears, and it looks like you responded to just about all of them, except one to staff. And I'm happy about that. I mean, everybody has issues, but it's how you deal with those issues that's important. And so I'm glad you dealt with those issues. But my first question is, is I've heard you talk about stuff in general, but I'd like to know specifically what you're going to do to make sure those issues don't come up again. I'm really concerned about giving a 15-year contract. It really bothers me giving a 15-year contract. My concern is, what kind of processes are you doing to make sure that you don't slip into old habits? And then I have some follow-up questions and comments.
I can answer the first part of that very easily, and then I'll defer to our assistant principal, Ms. Forsier. For the first four years of our operation, the only administrator on site was myself. And this year, we added additional administrative support with Ms. Flaherty, as well as bringing in an assistant principal. And it's those additions which have made tremendous changes and positive impacts in our ESE, in our ESOL programs. And because of our growth and because of where we project to be, there's no reason for us to go back to the one administrator model. We realized that that wasn't as effective as it, well, definitely wasn't as effective as it should be. And so by bringing on our full-time school counselor, and by bringing on a full-time AP, that has really been a huge positive and has really changed structurally who we are and how we operate. Ms. Forsier, our assistant principal, do you have more to add to that?
Hi, guys. Thanks for having me here. One of the things that I've done this year, working at Sky, is kind of tie up some of the structures that are in place, and one of them is the MTSS process. So I spent kind of the first quarter of the year looking at how things are run, how we're monitoring kids, how we're identifying new concerns and such. And then the second quarter of the year, right up until we left, we started to put in some, some formal structures for the MTSS. So the documentation is a little more clear, that follow-through that needs to happen is more evident-based, as opposed to what Ms. Burrit was talking about with regards to the teachers just functioning within their kids, within their classroom for their kids. kids, within their classroom for their kids. If you'd like, I can share my screen. We'll show you a snippet of some of the MTSS notes, if you want to see that. If not, I can avoid that.
Yeah, we probably, we, we may not be able to see a written note very easily because we're not seeing it on our computer.
Oh, you don't see it?
And I don't know how small it is.
It's a spreadsheet. So, but I can actually just forward it on to you guys.
Yeah, if you can just forward it on, that'll be fine.
Yeah, I can forward it afterwards. And what you'll see is basically, it identifies who's in a tier one, tier two, tier three, which students we're sending out for testing, what the follow-up timelines look like, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The person responsible for note-taking, the person responsible for, you know, following the records review and the parent contacts and such.
My next, my next follow-up question is, you know, I mean, you're high achieving, you know, it's almost perfunctory about the 15-year contract, but it's my understanding that, you know, we can always, you know, mutually agree to put caveats on, but they have to be mutually agreed. So, you know, you guys are free not to, you guys are free to go forward the 15-year contract, but if you guys are really committed to solving the CSE issue, I'm, I would like to know if you'd be willing to, I would just, I'm one board member, Ms. Suckus says it all the time, I'm one board member. But I would be requesting, is it possible for us to go for a 15-year contract with a contingency that they have to pass a successful ESE audit after five years? Would you be willing, I don't know what the rest of the board would, would say, but I'm just, that's my question to you, is before I even go down that road, is that something that, that you guys would find acceptable or not?
Honestly, because of the changes that we've made this year, I would have no problem with that, because I've no, I'm completely confident that five years from now, five months from now, we'd successfully pass an ESE audit.
Well...
I think the district also makes the audits on a regular basis, so that that information wouldn't be consistently reviewed in a regular time.
On time, five years.
As a follow-up to Eric's question, that was going to be one of my questions to you, because I'm not happy with the 15-year contract, because what's happened here is that all of the changes, all of the notations that were noted were corrected in this last six months. I would like to have some continuity to know that that plan is in place and that it's working before we do a five-year, a 15-year extension. So if you could agree to what Eric is asking you, I would be very happy. And you would then have my support.
I would have no problem with that and I speak for my Sky Board, but I don't think that they would have a problem with that as well, because I know that we're confident that we have made all those changes and we now have a structured leadership team in place that will continue that.
Shirley?
You know, I would like, yes, the caveat, if you don't correct that, but I would like to know if in fact, we can audit all of our charter schools to make sure that they're in compliance with the ESE and ESOL requirements, you know, on an annual basis. Are they, are they doing this and are they in compliance? Or is that something that's available to us or not?
I think I'm...
Because I, you know, if I get complaints from a parent, that, that's what I often get on charter schools. Not that I get a lot, but if I get some, it's that their ESE or ESOL needs aren't being met. So, I mean, if there's a way that we could interact more closely with our charter schools to oversee and make sure that those needs are being met and that they do have certified ESE and ESOL people and that those people are connected with us and get the training, not just for Sky Academy, but for all of our charter schools. And that might be something we'll look at at another meeting.
No, somebody's waiting to respond.
I can, I can just have one comment on that, that we do have annual audits on such things and we will continue to do that. And with Sky, we will look at these particular issues and we do that annually and will continue to do so.
Thank you.
Bridgette?
Thank you. Well, I like that idea a lot, Mr. Robinson, Eric workshop. It's weird when we're up here. And I appreciate your willingness to come to that, to the table on that as well, because it does have to be mutually agreed upon. But it illustrates your ownership and competence that you can, you know, you can handle and manage this effectively, but not just effectively, but beyond, you know, excel at it. If, I'm assuming we would need to have our attorney evaluate that so that that language is appropriate. But if I understand the intent, it's that you would, because to Dr. Cantalupo's point, we do the annual anyhow, but are, just to clarify to Mr. Robinson, it would be that the continuous, the extension would be contingent upon...
The passage of the five-year.
For five years.
Of the five-year.
Yeah. I love it and I appreciate you bringing that forward.
Thank you.
Jane?
Well, I just want to mention that having spent some time on the phone with some lawyers who understand IDEA a lot better than I do, we expect that we will have state and federal audits relative to our contingency plan that we have been utilizing with our students during this pandemic. How do you feel about delivering distance learning and how you've been able to accommodate those students that you have that have ESE needs?
Well, we, it's been a unique process, obviously, of connecting into all the students. Just like the districted schools, we have provided Chromebooks to every single student who needs it. We've worked with families to make sure that they had internet access for some families who don't have access at all, because we know that some of our students come to us from Northport and some parts of Northport don't have the greatest, most reliable internet access. So to those families, we provide paper packets. Our teachers are doing phone calls on a frequent basis. We've had a couple of our student teachers, as they've been going out, they've actually gone to some kids' houses. So a couple of them have gone to kids' houses and spoken with students who are in need. And I know that Ms. Flaherty has also done an adjustment to the plans, if you want to speak with that as well. Ms. Flaherty?
Absolutely. So per the district, they had asked us to do updated virtual plans for all students and so those were done in the first week of the virtual learning process. So, and they were sent out to all parents via email. And, and we responded to questions or anything that came up at that point.
And we continue to do IEP and 504 meetings virtually as well through Zoom conferences. So we continue to be focusing on our students and working with their parents during this time period. I just hope it ends.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
So Denise, you work with Art and, and Sky's attorneys to, to get the modification and built into the contract then? She's muted. Can she not hear me? Denise?
Yeah?
Oh, there she is.
Denise?
Yes.
Do you have anything else?
Here we are.
Okay, so you'll, you'll work with Sky Inglewood and Art Harding to get the modification built into the contract?
We will absolutely do that and hopefully bring the renewal before the board on June 2nd.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you very much.
Bye. Thank you.
Good job, Katrina.
Next.
You made it look easy.
Next up is Jody Dumas.
Katrina Ward.
On our capital items.
Huh?
Good morning, everybody. Can you hear me?
Barely. Barely.
Okay, let me try and move this a little closer. Is that better?
Yes. Barely. Barely.
Okay. Closer. Better?
Yes.
All right, so how's that? Closer. Mute your mic. All right, so how's that?
No.
Mute your mic.
Jody, what's happening is the, your device that you have is not, you need to change your audio settings. What you have right now is it's coming out of your, your board and so you're getting a cyclical feedback loop. You need to disable that and make it so it's coming out of the Chat 150, all right?
Your, your, your board, so you're getting a cyclical feedback loop. You need to disable that and make it so it's coming out of the Chat 150, all right? You're, you're... I'm working on it.
Actually, that may be Mickey who's doing that. I just muted her, so that's probably, it may be you, Mickey.
Actually, that may be Mickey who's doing that.
Yeah, it's Mickey.
Delight reaction.
So Mickey, I'm, I don't, I'm not quite sure what would be the best answer to fix that particular issue right now with you being all the way back at home.
Is she using two devices or...
It, it sounds like she's using two separate devices. She has a, she's using her speakers and she's also...
I think you have to mute one of them.
It may be best that...
Can we type to her so she can communicate back to you and say, making sure she has one of them?
I'm on my Surface Pro.
All right. But you're, you're still getting feedback on that. I think the best option will probably be that you need to mute and unmute anytime you speak. All right, thank you.
All right, so this is Jody again. Am I okay?
You're absolutely fine.
Can you speak louder? I will do my best.
Louder than that.
All right, well, good morning, everybody. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, perfect. Well, thank you for the opportunity this morning to take a little bit of your time. So the agenda item on the, on the workshop for today is kind of loosely titled Capital Items. We've got a number of things on here that we kind of wanted to go over with you, some things that are left over from previous conversations, some follow-up items, and then talking a little bit about impact fees. So we're going to talk about our, just a little update on our property purchase for West Villages, talk a little bit about the Oak Park Track, which is scheduled in our five-year capital plan, but Board had requested some follow-up information, talk about our timing HVAC projects for Northport High and Sarasota High, talk about an updated scope and request for Booker High BPA, the project that's just currently underway at Booker High School. And then, and last, have a discussion about impact fees. So part of the team here again today, the A-Team is obviously Mickey Ryan from Planning, Gina Runyon's from Finance, and Paul Pitcher from Construction. And so they will, they will be my backup as we work through these items. Any questions before we get started?
Nope. Take it away.
Okay. So just a little quick update on the property purchase for our West Villages property. It was originally, we had put a placeholder on today's board meeting for an approval for our contract to purchase that property. We have pulled that, that agreement off and want to give you a little update. As you remember, or as you may recall, we are in a process of working through swapping our current KA property in West Villages for a new KA location and at the same time, buying a piece of property right adjacent to that to build a high school. Mickey Ryan and Paul Pitcher and our, and our team of associates are working through that process. One of the snags that we ran into, which again, we're working through, but we just couldn't be ready for this board meeting, was that we need a guarantee from the developer that the road, because the Minnesota Beach Road is not finished in front of our property. It'll eventually connect the River Road. And before we enter any kind of a purchase agreement, we need some kind of financial obligation that that, that road will be built so that we have access to our, to our property. So we are working through those details, very confident we'll get there. With, with West Villages, we just could not work those details in time for this workshop so, and this board meeting. So I anticipate you'll see that, see that on one of the June meetings for approval. Any questions or comments?
Bridgette?
Thanks, Jody. That's the Hale property? I always, right? No?
No, this is the one in West Villages in Northport.
This is West Village, okay.
So it's the place we'd be looking to build another high school down by the, the new stadium in Northport off of 41.
So we're swapping out, so it's more infrastructure related to the delay, but we're in, within the, okay.
Yes, correct. And again, we're not in, we're not in the due diligence period yet with them. The contract you're going to see, hopefully on our next board meeting in June, would be us entering into that due diligence period. We're not there yet with them. We won't do that until we get guarantees on that road being built.
Shirley?
I was reading in the Herald Tribune that the West Villages is being changed to Wellon Park. Is this part of that area that's going to be changed?
Mickey, do you have a, do you have an answer for that? I do not.
All right.
Answer is yes.
We might want to look at changing the name if in fact it changes.
Thanks, Mickey.
We want to look at changing the name if in fact it changes. Go ahead.
Well, I was talking to the planning manager, the city of Northport.
We want to look at changing the name if in fact it changes.
And she said that they are changing some names. I think you're going to have to mute yourself, Mickey. Mute yourself, Mickey. Yeah, I'm hearing a lot, I'm hearing Jody and then the meeting. I'm hearing it twice.
All right, thanks, Mickey. Apologize for that, everybody. So if there are no other comments on, on the property purchase for West Villages, the next item I wanted to talk about a little bit was Oak Park Track. If you remember, as we presented the CIP plan, the five-year plan, the, the planned track at Oak Park had popped on there this year. It's not something that we've talked about before. It's sitting in year three of the current plan anyway, as in the COPS plan, the borrowing plan, for a total cost of $3 million. I have followed up and as part of your board read ahead for the workshop, we provided, I've had conversations with Jamie, the principal at Oak Park, and she provided a justification and reasoning behind the need for a track specifically at Oak Park to fulfill the needs of the students at Oak Park. The other added benefit is, is with Special Olympics, hopefully working with them to bring some events onto the Oak Park campus. We have not been able to, to discuss that yet with, with anybody from Special Olympics. Jamie's reaching out to her contacts. So we are, we're moving forward at this point, but wanted to make sure we provided you the update from Jamie in terms of why that was important for Oak Park and have that brought to you for consideration today. So I guess I'll open up the board comments, considerations. Is that something we want to consider keeping on, the five-year capital plan, or what are your thoughts?
Who wants to talk? I don't see any names. Shirley?
I'd, I'd like to keep it on the plan. I think it's a worthwhile issue that we can provide for our community and for these students.
Bridgette?
Yeah, thank you for adding the additional information. And again...
So is anybody commenting? I apologize, I can't hear anything.
Oh. Hold tight. My mic's on. Shirley's was. Can you hear us, Jody?
We can't hear you, Jody. Speak louder.
Jody, can you hear us?
Jody, can you hear us or no?
Hey, Mitzi, if you can hear me, maybe raise your hand, because I can't hear you guys.
Hold on, have it now. Can you hear us now?
Can you hear us?
Yeah, okay, I got you back. Sorry about that.
Do you want to, Shirley, do you want to restate?
My statement was, I wanted to leave it on. I think it's a good idea. It's good for the students, good for the community, and thank you for bringing it forward.
And so, thank you for getting more information. Just, just to clarify, because I think when you read the rationale, I, I understand there's a lot of value. I think that when, Jody, you and I, that verse came up, I feel like a couple of months ago, when this, we were talking about preparing for the CIP and that this was on there, well, the initial conversation with the prior superintendent had been around, you know, cultivating a relationship through Special Olympics, so, which would be great for our area, but again, these are, these are things that I think need to be hashed out if we're going to expend dollars in them now. And, and so a hope is great, but if we're kind of down the road, I think of other county projects where there's, you know, there are different collaborations and that leads to it being successful and it values the expenditures as well beyond what it would also bring to the, you know, the schools and the students. So I, you know, certainly read the rationale and can't deny that it would bring that value. My challenge is, and there's a lot of, you know, projects that we're going to be looking at in a very uncertain time, and so I have trepidation about saying yes when some of those elements aren't finalized. But the other part is, would this be included in, because this, that's what I wanted to confirm, is this included in the, the borrowing amount? No. Okay, I thought he'd said that, that's what I said. So it sits in our CIP plan as a potential, but not a for sure, which, but I want to be fair to the, you know, Oak Park community and the principal, just to share where I stand. I don't, I think it has great opportunity, but I would like to see more substantial collaboration if it's going to be really not just for Oak Park students and Lakeview, but if there is a longer-term plan to work through, let's use Special Olympics. So I, you know, certainly read the rationale and can't deny that it would bring that value. My challenge is, and there's a lot of, you know, projects that we're going to be looking at in a very uncertain time, and so I have trepidation about saying yes when some of those elements aren't finalized. But the other part is, would this be included in, because this, that's what I wanted to confirm, is this included in the, the borrowing amount? No. Okay, I thought he'd said that, that's what I said. So it sits in our CIP plan as a potential, but not a for sure, which, but I want to be fair to the, you know, Oak Park community and the principal, just to share where I stand. I don't, I think it has great opportunity, but I would like to see more substantial collaboration if it's going to be really not just for Oak Park students and Lakeview, but if there is a longer-term plan to work through, let's use Special Olympics. And again, I think that just allows us to, to illustrate some, a depth of meaning for it, for the project. So it's not a commitment, it's just, we're putting it, we're keeping it on CIP, and it's on year three. I thought initially it was on year five.
It's year three.
Was it moved up or am I just misremembering?
So you've got, so as we talk about the capital plan, remember when we presented them to you, there were two versions. One was a pay-as-you-go, which had a bunch of the projects moved out from where we normally would have budgeted them to try and pay for the elementary school, excuse me, the, the K-8 school with just funds coming into the district. The version I'm referring to is the, is the COPS version that we also presented at that workshop, which, which borrows money for the new K-8 school on, on the Hale property, Oak Park Road. And then the other projects such as the Oak Park Track are from, from funds normally coming into the, to the school district, not through borrowing. But it takes those projects and moves them up in timeline because, again, we're not using, we're not using pay-as-you-go money to fund the new, the new K-8 school. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so we'd be using COPS if, if we potentially, yeah, go ahead.
So, so the COPS would fund the K-8 school, which would allow the CIP that has had to be moved to the right in order to fund pay-as-you-go for a school to stay back where its original programming was. If we weren't building a school, it would have originally been programmed in year three. Am I correct, Jody?
Correct.
So, so that's just keeping it where it was had we not had the need to build a K-8 school. So, but I, I do want to clarify as far as the Special Olympics. I don't believe that this was planned as a joint venture capital project with Special Olympics. If Special Olympics were to use our facilities, they would pay a rental fee and facility use agreement would be executed. Is that correct or is this supposed to be a joint project?
No, so I think you're exactly correct, Mitzi. I think this was billed as a, a, we will build it, would you come and rent it from us, would you hold events here? And I think that's the scenario we were moving forward with.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Eric.
So I, I am, I'm 100% in for this. I remember before they, before they had the track there doing the Sammy's Run, and I was, I was, had the ability to sponsor Sammy's Run, and Sammy's parents are friends of mine. And they eventually stopped it right around the time, coincidentally, where I was no longer able to run a 5K anymore. I don't know if one had anything to do with the other. But if you're going to put a track at all the other schools, starting out with Venice High, why would you skip Oak Park? I, I don't, I don't see the rationale there. I, I see her rationale, why to have a track at Oak Park more so than any other school. I mean, seeing the, the excitement and the, and the physical nature, and you could see that it is therapeutic for those kids to take advantage of. And I would, I would imagine the track at Oak Park would probably be, be utilized at a higher rate than any other track in our district. And I would think that the, the utilization of that track would have more impact and effect on those students than any other track in our district. So I'm 100% for this, and I think I'm thankful that you guys are highlighting this and bringing it in front of the board, and this doesn't get lost in the shuffle. And so thank you for you and your team to making sure that this gets shepherded through. But if you're looking for a direction for my, me, I think it's pretty clear what my direction is.
I think it's a great idea, and I'm in favor of it. It's in my neighborhood, and I ride my bike there when they had the Sammy's Run. I would ride my bike there so I didn't have to get stuck with all the traffic and the cars. So I think you have your directions, Jody.
Perfect, okay, we will proceed. Thank you very much. Third item we wanted to discuss is, came out of our, again, out of our discussions regarding the, the presentation on the CIP five-year budgets. And that was timing of two projects on the, on the capital plan. One is replacement of the airside equipment at Northport High. So that, that's replacement of the air handlers, upgrade of the classrooms, normally an HVAC refresh, that's exactly what we do at Northport High. And also includes upgrade of their science rooms and science labs to make sure they reflect the latest technology that's out there. So that project is currently funded, partially for next year to start some design, start some investigation. And then in '22, '23, and '23, '24, the balance is, is funded. And then the other project that we would consider looking at moving up was Sarasota High HVAC plant and, excuse me, the east side refresh, same project, but on the east side of campus at Sarasota High. Again, replacement of chillers there like we did at Northport High, and then everything on the airside in buildings 13 and 14. And it would be the same thing, painting, carpet, upgrade of the facilities to make sure we give them a good refresh when we're, when we're in there. The conversation last time was wrapped around the borrowing, the COPS borrowing for the new elementary school. And one of the questions was, why don't we roll these projects in quicker and wrap that into the borrowing for the new, for the new school, also borrow for these projects so we could get them done quicker? So Paul and I and Mickey, the whole team sat down and tried to assess that and really take an objective look at, would that make sense for us? So at the end of the day, we decided no for a couple of reasons, and let me explain them. One has to do with recent changes in, in code for HVAC systems. As you know, I think many of our, all of our systems in the last several years are designed around large air handlers that service multiple rooms. And we like that because of ease of maintenance and for efficiency. With the change in code, we are going to have to move to a, a different style of design, which is going to require VAV boxes in classrooms or in hallways and smaller air handlers to service smaller sets of rooms. And so we are really trying to understand as we redesign what that means. As we look at a school like Northport High, we look at a school like Sarasota High, that may also include, because of those changes, changes in ductwork. So we really want to make sure before we dig into those projects, we really understand controls, design, and make sure we're making the right choices to comply with energy code. So that's one reason. The other reason is, just in terms of workload, as we look at Paul's team with project managers, we have, we have, we have free project managers that are working with Paul. They're all very busy, especially if we take on that new element, excuse me, that new K-8 school on the Hale property. Bringing these forward really starts to get us in a situation where we've got project managers handling multiple large projects. Not something we can't do and can't accomplish. Paul's an awesome director, we got great project managers, but it's just a red flag. As you start to overload project managers, mistakes can be made. So that's just one of the things we're cautionary with moving those projects forward. And then a third thing has to do with equipment. We have timed these projects, we feel right about the right time to replace that equipment. So if I could say to you today, hey, we've got failing equipment at Northport High, it's, it's an indoor air quality concern, it's a, it's a climate concern, we need to get those out next year, I would be saying that. But we feel comfortable that that equipment is still running okay, it's planned and timed correctly. So there's no equipment needs to say, hey, we got to get this done soon. There's not an emergency need on those campuses. So those are, those are important. And then the final factor, you know, as a planning team, we've talked about, we've tried to time these projects because, again, these are going to be multi-year, large projects where Paul and his team have to take over large portions of the buildings at a time. We are probably not going to be able to time those over the course of a summer break. And so we're going to need swing space on those campuses. So for example, and Paul, I don't know if you want to jump in here, he started to set up some, some portables at Northport High to provide that swing space, but these are timed so that as Paul starts to finish up the project at Pine View, remember, that's a large three-story building as, as a portable replacement project, we will have 50 or so portables coming off of Pine View that we need to go somewhere. Our plan is to time these projects so that we can move those portables down to Northport High, move some to Sarasota High, and then use our current portables to provide that swing space versus leasing. If we don't do that, we're going to have to lease portables on these other projects and increase the project cost. So Paul, I don't know if you want to comment on that last piece a little bit?
We've, we've already started pulling, last summer, we pulled portables out of Venice Middle School and started staging them at Northport, pretty much on their, kind of their practice band facility. We've got a layout that we think will work for approximately 18 portables on that site. Those of you that know Sarasota High School, it's going to be even tougher to locate portables there. The only place we really have is the practice football field, just to the east side of Building Six, which is the fieldhouse. There were a number of portables there, but in a quick look at the FISH plans, if we were to take half a building or a floor at a time, we're still going to need somewhere between 20 and 22 portables on that campus, which means we're going to take up a lot of space. The stackable portables that have become available for us that we can put essentially side by side, we've seen their increase because, an increase in cost to lease them almost triple, I think, just because people are now realizing space is tight and the, the desire to have those type of portables is a whole lot different than what it used to be. So again, like Jody said, our, our budgetary impact from a, from a capital standpoint or from a portable standpoint, we'll, we'll be spending an awful lot of money to get those set up. Knowing that we're going to have to bring somewhere between 20 and 22 portables on Sarasota High School, that in itself is going to take some engineering work at the start of the project, just to get those portables onsite, hooked up to infrastructure and services, and be ready to accept students. You know, the best thing we could do is, is start a school year in the portables where we would have the summer to start doing work on the buildings. But as Jody did state, both Northport High and Sarasota High are going to be multiple year projects. Northport High, it wouldn't surprise me if it spans at least three summers with time in between, just because we've got the Performing Arts Center down there, obviously the cafeteria, media, and, and office area have to get done during the summers along with media. So in itself, that usually separates major phases of the project during the summer. So again, multiple years, multiple phases on both of those projects.
None of this.
So given the fact, given the fact that I just discussed.
None of this was included in our read ahead. Is that correct?
No, there was no documentation. We were just having discussions about timing of the projects. Correct. We didn't give you any, any read ahead on, on these, this issue.
So, so this was the item that was discussed at the last board workshop, where there was some contemplation of maybe moving the mechanical systems into a potential borrowing. So we're just trying to explain why it really probably isn't a good thing to do, because again, when you borrow money, you have a specific spend-down period, and three summers for one school is probably not going to work within that same spend-down provision. And again, the use of staff and project managers. So Jody was just trying to give an overall explanation of the timing of the projects based on the age of the, the mechanical systems already, and the timing of their replacements, the use of the portables that we're freeing up on the Pine View campus in order to save us from having to rent relocatables and so all of the other, that's just pretty much what it is, is it's just kind of briefing the board on why we don't necessarily believe taking those HVA system projects and advancing them from where they're currently sitting in the CIP is the best thing for right now.
So student. Bridgette?
Student. Thank you, Jody, you know, and I thank you for clarifying that, Caroline, because I was looking through here, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing it, but, and I know that that was revisited. And I, this, and I know we are on a tight timeline, so, but I do want to bring this up in general, because when we think about our capital, and especially what made me think of is when we're talking about the portables and even the cost increase, and the reason for that is people are probably rushing to get them because they realize, I'm assuming, it's likely because of the facility spacing and trying to figure out how you would move forward with a social distancing, for example, and on campus. And so my question in general would be, as we discuss that, or, or is your team evaluating, almost going backwards where we've talked about the CIP before, is very different when you look future-looking now? And we may be having to take another step back and look at even the five-year plan, or what are these various projects we're going to have to do? Because we may have to very significantly alter the way in which our kids, our students are in, or our staff are in our classrooms. And my, my worry would be that we wouldn't think through that and then would continue through certain projects and then wish we hadn't expended those capital dollars for X project because we could have reverted to a different, you know, structure or, or strategy. Is that conversation happening with your team right now?
So I, I would let maybe Mitzi respond to some of that, but I, I would say as a district, the team is, is, from all aspects of the district perspective, including Paul, Mickey, myself, the, the capital planning team, we are constantly looking at that. Again, the capital budget we're approving this year, but every, every other year, the, the next four years are kind of, they're free-flowing, and, and we feel like we want to be adaptable to what's going on, not only, not only in terms of financial buying, construction services, and what's going on with pricing, but also certainly in a COVID-19 environment, you're exactly right. And I think as we continue to plan for what school looks like, we, I think we're in a good spot. We're cautious, we're proceeding slowly, and we're analyzing all the alternatives. So I think the answer to your question is yes. We've got a great team who asks a lot of questions, and, and I think then we get to the right answers. So you've got my guarantee that as we work with Mitzi, we will continue to do that in all aspects of the district. What do we look like in terms of planning for opening, and then what does that mean moving forward in terms of the future of public schools?
Yeah, I, I think the, the consideration that we would, I mean, things that we would need to consider, what, if there are changes and how schools need to be planned, if the state changes, the SREF, you know, the SREFs change. We are also limited in the cost per student station for which we're allowed to spend funding for. So again, if it's, you have to have classroom space where you're allowed to socially distance your students, that means your classrooms themselves become substantially larger, but you're still limited to the amount you can spend per each student station. So, so it would be an interesting conversation to see what OEF up in Tallahassee is actually contemplating in terms of this new reality we're kind of all living in.
And just a quick follow-up. The only reason I've raised that is just as we have these discussions, it's, I don't want us to be, and I'm not claiming that this is it, but sure-sighted where we're continuing through this, but when, and I want to tie up capital dollars to other projects, because before, you know, Mar, or February, they made sense, but now we're adjusting to whatever we have to do, and we are still working that out. But again, from a planning perspective, it's something I want to make sure we're, we're cognizant of as we look at the, the overall capital side of it. So that's just.
Shirley?
Definitely.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I want to thank you. I was one of those board members who said, well, while dollars are cheap to borrow now, why don't we look at moving some of these projects ahead? And I'm glad that, you know, you went back and you looked at, you know, can we handle the workload, you know, with the portables and staff, and is it needed now? And then especially now with the, you know, as you and Bridgette have pointed out, we've got these uncertainties with the COVID-19. So I really appreciate you guys taking a deeper look into this and getting back to us with the questions and the answers for those. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Jody, I'd like to also bring up that we're also on top of this through the coalition of other school districts, the school planners, that we're always talking about this and sharing information back and forth as to how other districts, what they're looking at also.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mickey.
You're always on top of things, Mickey.
Bridgette? I'm sorry, I don't want to keep, the only one thing I wanted to add, and I just, and this is something we'll have to talk about probably in more depth, but just as we consider from a planning perspective, there was, and this is again, an unknown, which there's a ton of them, but there are discussions or potential predictions about a lot of private schools being unable to sustain themselves in closing, and therefore, we as a district or public schools across the nation would have an influx of students. And I just want to make sure, again, that's, is that something we're also evaluate? Again, we don't know what that looks like. I think there are tools, and we can sidebar this to, if you want to do it to this afternoon to talk through it because of our time right here, but it's just, I think there, I want to make sure that's being equally navigated because we, right, I mean.
Oh, it's, it's very much being monitored. You know, Krista kind of monitors all of the student enrollment and, which is what determines the staffing at each of our schools. So we have seen an increase in the number of students enrolling in our full-time virtual program. We're not sure how that overall impact may be. I don't know that we've necessarily seen a large influx of students coming in from private schools or registering with us from a private school, but all of those are monitored, they all communicate, whether it's Office of School Choice, or it's the, the Budget Office when it comes to student FTE projections, also the Rodney's Office in IT as far as student information systems, and then registrations over with Joeyda Berkey. So we have, they're all communicating constantly, and we, the principals are monitoring it if they're seeing what they believe to be a decline in enrollment, they're actually holding back units. If they're seeing what they believe to be large increases, they're definitely calling to say, I think I'm going to need more teaching units. We have a large meeting, usually after five days. We take our predicted path of what we believe enrollment will be in October based upon what our historical trending has been over years. And so it's very carefully monitored, I just want you to know. Okay, Jody, next up.
Okay, all right, so. So our fourth item on the agenda is Booker High School VPA project. And so just I want to talk to you a little bit about that and then kind of open it up for discussion. In terms of your read ahead, we were able to provide a bunch of documents for you to take a look at and consider. Just want to remind you, so Booker High VPA, it started a few years ago and I remember being on campus that fine day with Scott Lempy when we ran into some people at the Booker High VPA doing a tour. And we were approached by some individuals talking about the needs of the VPA at Booker High and what that might look like and how the district could support that. And so that evolved into a project where we were, excuse me, replacing lighting and sound panels and upgrading, kind of the behind the scenes areas at Booker High School. As that project started to develop, there were some additional needs that came out and there were some options laid out that brought that project increased scope. And so that decision was made about a year ago to increase that scope to about $7 million. And that project included adding on to the front entrance to the, off the courtyard to the VPA theater, provided a nice entrance, more room for them to set up and have people mingle in their front lobby. It increased what we were doing in terms of rigging and mechanical and fits and finishes within the theater itself, trying to provide some good upgrades. And that budget was about $7 million and that was approved by the school board. We embarked on that design, selection committee, embarked on that design process and as that design started to take shape in conversations with the customers at the site, Dr. Shelley and her team, one of the things that came out apparently very quickly was that Booker High had some additional needs and they wanted to really embark upon a kind of a master planning exercise for that program and that facility. Our architect onboard, Shingel Schultz, has done a lot of work for us in the past and so they volunteered to do that at no cost with the project team. And so what you have in front of you is a result of that additional planning stemming from the VPA improvement project. And that's really come up with some additional options for you to consider. We again, laid those out in the packet we provided to you and wanted to open that up to discussion today. As you know, in the current five-year plan we've been referring to, we did not have any additional money allocated to Booker High VPA. But certainly I know that we've talked in the past and the board had a lot of concerns about making sure that they knew about all the projects in the district, they were able to evaluate all the alternatives and make decisions about what they felt was important. So in talking with Dr. Shelley, we promised that we were in the capital planning process and that we would present this to the board to have you guys discuss how you wanted to handle this. Certainly if you wanted to, one of the options is to add to the scope and increase the project as is. One of the options is to handle this as a planning document for the future. We've done that on other campuses like Pine View where we had a master plan that kind of sat for a few years until it was funded. So really this is in front of you for discussion today to talk about budget priorities and if you want to consider providing some additional funding on the Booker High campus for their VPA, again, as kind of outlined by Dr. Shelley and her team and the architects on the current project. So with that, I will open it up to questions and conversation.
Yeah, I read the explanation that Dr. Shelley gave and I almost like to say, if Dr. Shelley says we need it, you know, I have to agree because, you know, I really respect what she has to say. But one of the things she was saying is that they have to hold classrooms in what are dressing rooms, you know, without a decent space for furniture and things like that. I didn't realize that was happening at this time. And some of the other things that she's talking about too, A, it's going to be the 50-year anniversary that we could be doing this on, that would be great, and that now half of the students at Booker High School are in the VPA program and this black box theater would have space for more student performances and also more classroom space too. So I think that, you know, it probably is a good thing to move forward with. I think more and more of the community are going to these plays and the performances that they have and they get sold out. So if we can add expansion to allow more people from the community to learn about this resource, I mean, Booker High School, that performing arts program, it's a gem and that school facility itself is so gorgeous to open that up and let the community see, more of the community see what we have to offer there, I think would be a good idea. Plus, Dr. Shelley says it's needed, so got to go with Dr. Shelley here.
Bridgette.
Well, first I'll start with there, I am a huge fan of Booker High and their VPA theater. I realize the value it brings beyond and I want to start with that because we are up here with tough decisions in front of us and kind of going back to what I'd said earlier is there's a lot of uncertainty and from a capital expenditure standpoint as a board, I want to make sure we are thoughtful and able to pivot correctly to serve and to serve the variety of changing needs that we may have. They may not all be in a physical presence from a, you know, a facility standpoint because we, again, there's, we don't know how we would be changing and converting from an instructional standpoint, but I am a little concerned at the sticker price of this in totality. And you don't get more of a supportive, I mean, theater is, was part of my background. I value it incredibly and I also know this community does, but again, like I said, this puts, we are in a tough spot because it's not that we don't support the program, I just need to be in my, the way I look at it is have to be thoughtful about how we utilize the dollars and for what. And again, given the uncertain times we're in, it gives me a little, well, a lot of trepidation when you look at that sticker price. So I wish, I don't have the CIP plan, so if I can visualize where this money would be coming from, it would help me a little bit more. But I'm going to, before you answer that, and I appreciate the historical aspect and I just want to go back. So the board initially approved this expansion, I'm sorry, this back last year, correct? The $7 million and it was through PSSC? Did we do, was that how?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I thought. So and then through that, it's in that time, what time of year was that? When was that? Ballpark, not?
Paul, do you remember?
Yeah, I think it was early, it was probably like you said, Jody, earlier, maybe a year, a little bit earlier or sooner than that. And I think it was, you know, maybe January, February timeframe where we shifted from a design build contract place, knowing what the price was going to be over to the selection process.
So we changed from design build back in January of last year, because we always knew we were going to update the.
The original, the original plan again was for lights and sound.
Correct.
So I think that was going to be under your design build because the budget for that was within that capacity, but then you switched to selection because the scope expanded, I believe. Is that correct, Jody? I mean, you can.
Yeah, and essentially it became a totally different project where we really needed a heavy emphasis on architecture.
Right.
And so we switched over, Paul put out a selection and we selected a team to move forward with the $7 million project. That's absolutely correct.
Right. And so, but then from there, it went from seven million, 7.9, so I'll say eight, right? Then to the additional enhancements that more than doubled, more than doubled the price.
Agreed. So you're exactly right. So the current budget is $7 million. That's the budget. And at this point, at the phase they're in where again, they're still under some design and so pricing is happening while they're designing and typically this will happen on all projects as that, as design starts to take shape and we weigh what we can fit into a project and what we can't, our contractors are also pricing at various steps throughout that process. And right now that we're about, as presented, we're about 7.9 million. What that means is, and this is typical on a lot of projects, that the team will go to work and they'll roll their sleeves up and that, we're working with a budget of 7 million, they will, they will work to see how they get that budget into the $7 million area. And so, you know, we will get the scope done with the budget we're allocated and we'll make some decisions about what fits and what doesn't fit in that project. Again, that's typical process on a project as that project comes through schematic, to design development, to construction drawings, you know, that pricing and modification has to happen. So that's where we currently are. Again, a little bit out of the normal, a normal project, we would, we would be driving that design team and that construction team to the budget and to the scope. And again, this turned out a little bit differently because they embarked upon a kind of a planning process, a master planning process. And so we are in a situation now where, you know, the school's got some additional needs. It's been kind of drawn in hand sketches and some pricing that comes along with it. And so wanted to present that to you. Again, a little bit out of the ordinary than we normally would do, but wanted to have the option in front of you.
Right.
As you consider this and you consider the options, you know, the question was how we fund it. And so that's one of the questions, you know, discussion items we have for you. It was not contemplated in our CIP because we were not aware of it. So we're going to have to make some decisions. If it's something you want to move forward with, we may have to borrow the money to do it, or if we're not going to borrow, we're going to have to make some hard decisions about other projects that we're not going to be able to do if you want to do it right now.
So wait, just to go back to, because I think the process is important to compare to what we do in the past and I'll use STC South. I mean, that scope changed and discussed different options and certainly saw with that, the price tag with it increased. But I think my question is, again, if I, if we could understand how to pay for it or, and I think there's a couple of different options, I love the idea, but is it to make the most sense for us to do this right now, given all of the other unknown capital expenditures we may be looking at? And the other question was, I mean, for it to shift, like I said, yes, I think, Jody, you're correct, it's a little, certainly a different, I mean, I understand that we approved the 7 million and it went higher than that, I understand, I understand that whole process of how we could try to get that back down to what the approved budget was, but then the second part of where it's grown since then and then come back to us is interesting. So my question is, has there been conversations about perhaps, you know, having a joint use facility, maybe another entity helping pay for that? I mean, is that part of any of the discussions at all?
So I had a discussion with the principal about a week ago in terms of what this, what this presentation, what this workshop would look like and she, and I have not followed up her since then, but she had said at that particular time, and I know she's watching today, that she was going to be pursuing some options from the city. I'm not sure if she had a chance to do that yet, but I know that was part of the conversation moving forward, that she was going to look to see if that, if some of that could come to fruition. But again, I do not know for sure if she's done that yet or if she's had any of those conversations at this point.
From a diving standpoint, we actually decided to stop the design build process early last.
Can't hear you, Paul.
Paul, can you turn your speaker up or your microphone?
It's a muffle.
I'm sorry, I probably have papers on top of my mouth. Is that better?
Maybe move a little closer, Paul.
Is that better?
There you go.
Yeah, we decided to stop the design build process early last summer and then entered into the selection process over the summer and did our selection early fall last year. Just a clarification.
Oh, the timing.
Thank you.
And at this point in time, just another clarification, the present, to do the design that was presented or that we selected upon is actually, would be somewhere upwards of 9.5 million, not 7.9. 7.9 is just for the construction. That's for construction budget, but the all-in for the presentation be at 9.5.
I don't understand him.
Thank you.
Okay, is this you, Eric? Eric? Sorry.
I'm still not quite clear how it went from 7 to 20 million.
I can tell you.
I'm sorry? I'm still not clear about how it went from 7 to 20 million. That is, I don't understand how staff could have been that far off of almost tripling the amount of money. It just, it's rather unbelievable.
Let me comment on that because again, I feel like I was involved as much as I could be along the way. When the budget went to $7 million last year, I toured with, at that time Superintendent Bowden, a number of our staff as we looked through the options that were laid out at that time. And at that time, there was nothing included in the request from the school for an additional theater or a new entrance or additional classroom. So that scope was not on our radar and frankly, I'm being honest, it wasn't on my radar until about a month ago, maybe a couple of weeks ago, so.
How did it get on your radar?
I apologize for that.
How did it get on your radar?
Got a call from the school.
Okay.
About additional needs.
I mean, it's, I'm wrestling, I want to see us go forward, the question is, is how much? I want us to do it. I mean, when I see here 20 million, it's hard to wrap your head around it. And so for me, my most contemporaneous thing to think about is STC Northport. I mean, it was 24 million. And if you look at the size and scope of that building, that's comparable in my mind to 20 million. And so that's a really massive building with a lot of classrooms for 24 million. So comparing that to this VPA makes me think this thing is going to be huge. If it's not huge, then why is it costing $20 million? And to me, I have no problem supporting it if there really is a need for a $20 million project and Jody, you're saying that that is a need for them, the staff is saying that. I would like us to at least give Dr. Shelley the opportunity of going to the city, seeing if she can raise money. Personally, as one board member, I would, my mind going back to another, not contemporaneous, but an example would be the Venice High project where the school district did half, I think it was 15 million, it was before my day.
Seven and a half.
Seven and a half, seven and a half. I would be more inclined to say 10 million, 10 million, 30% increase for inflation, but give her the opportunity to, you know, get some sponsorships, get some buy-in from the city of Sarasota like she did with the, you know, like Venice did with the city of Venice. I'm more, I'm more amicable to doing something like that, a 50-50 split with raising money. And we all know Dr. Shelley, like Ms. Brown says, you can't say no to her. So I have reason, I have no reason to expect that she wouldn't be able to raise those type of funds. And so I'm inclined to support the 20 million, but I would like to see us pay for half of it and see them to be able to raise the other 50%. I want to make sure she gets it. So that's where my head's at.
I'm going to break my normal pattern and normally I don't speak until the end because I want to try and fill in some holes. This happened, the scope of the project changed. I've been involved with this for seven years now and it all started out with Booker High School not having sufficient lights to replace a light if it blew out because they were too expensive to have extra lights down there. And this, this is where it came from. From there, then we looked at the back and what needed to be done with the lighting and just, and there was never an architect that came in that understood theater like we had at Venice High School. Venice High School, we had an architect that understood performances and theaters and never did that happen. They had the wrong curtains put up because the person who ordered the curtains for them did not have an understanding of what the needs were from a theatrical point of view. So that was another $5,000 what lost because of that. So we have constantly been putting patches on the Booker High School and the VPA program. My thinking is that we need to do this, do it right and have the best VPA program. If I read in these notes, Dr. Shelley has to turn away 20 to 30% of kids that are interested in going into the program because she doesn't have the room for them. This will also make us ADA compliant. It will put in an elevator, which it currently doesn't have, we only has those crooked stairs in the back that you go up if you want to go up to the mezzanine. It doesn't have, so it will redo that stairs. It will put in an elevator, so it'll be ADA compliant that any kid with a disability will then be able to work in the control booth, but they cannot do that now because it's not, they can't get up there. So what you're seeing is the evacuation or excavation of land underneath where it's sloping down, the theater is sloping, that will be excavated and that will be built up and then the stairs will come off of there. I mean, that's where all of the funding is coming in. That's why the extra change has been for the funds there. If we look at this, this is our premier school for VPA, for visual and performing arts. People go into television and they go to New York and they really do go on. It's almost like you're saying, it's your STC, it's the technical college. This is the. This is the college for the performing arts, or the pre-college for performing arts. I know it's a lot of money, and I know we're in terrible times, but we're always in terrible times, and it's always a lot of money. So whether we want to make this school be able to work up to its ability, I mean, that's, that's really the question. Do we want to, do we have the foresight to look into the future and say, this is what this school can be if we just plan it? I'm not saying we have to do it all right now, but I'm saying let's plan it, let's do the whole thing instead of putting a patchwork here and a patchwork there. And eventually, we will never get to what, what the request is if we patchwork it. It really, really, I, I, I'm sorry, I'm very passionate about this, and I guess it's because I've had two grandsons go through this school, so I've spent lots of time. At one point, I was called granny because I was so involved with the school and with the kids in this program. So I, I guess I'm a little bit biased, but I think we can have a showcase of a school that we think Pine View is a showcase, STC is a showcase, Booker High School can be the one for the performing arts, for the visual and the performing arts. If we can just take a leap of faith and put it all together and see where, see how we can afford it, not just say no. I'm sorry, I'm a soapbox that time. Jane? I'm sorry, I hardly have a rant like-
Well, okay, I, I get it, and I understand it. But here's what I'm concerned about, and here's what I question. You know, we have, we have academics, we have arts, we have athletics. I'm putting things into three big buckets. We pretty much covered athletics. We're putting new fill in at Riverview, and everybody's excited about that. I am, because it's standing on the field before, it's like standing on a sponge, and I'm worried, I was always worried somebody was going to get, really get hurt because the fill was engineered improperly, and so that's great. And we've got the tracks going in and so forth and so on, so that's, that's good stuff. But the arts, which I'm very, very much promote, is really important. And, you know, classroom space and having enough facilities for that space, you know, it's good that we're looking at it. If you have 50% or more that you revise a building, you got to go with ADA compliances and latest state-of-the-art and everything else. And this looks like 50% to me, because you're putting in a mezzanine and an elevator, you're going to have added capacity of seats, and so that just says to the architects and engineers, uh-oh, it's time to really do a, a major reno to today's code and compliance in FPA 72, Life Safety 101, et cetera. So I think, I think that's the way it goes. And, and, you know, starting something small and moving forward, it's really contingency, I think, in the future for us to have someone who really understands arts and theater in our construction department or somewhere. We need more of a liaison in the future. Because now we've got Booker High, which is our primo VPA. But then we got Sarasota High, and I've intended a lot of functions at Sarasota High for theater that were exceptional. And David Jones has been talking about renovating that theater for some time. What does that look like? We've always got new things that we have to add in, technologies, lighting, soundboards. Soundboard can be damaged by a student that goes and does something incorrectly, and we're finding that, you know, it requires some expertise in running these facilities. I don't know about Northport High. I know they're doing some, some things now. But I think we need to not only address Booker, and I'm not ready to make a decision yet, I'm going to do some more investigating, talk to Dr. Shelley and so forth, but this, you know, might be the best thing we could do. I don't know how we do it, maybe we do it in phases. But I also think we have to look at our other schools and our other programs. And David's been talking about doing something for that theater for five years now, I think. And I think we have to look at all of them, we have to look at fairness. Venice Performing Arts Center was built for $15 million, half from the city of Venice and half from us. And then the city of Venice said, bye, and they turned around and walked away. But it was most of a shell. It was four miles of a field. It really didn't have all the, I mean, we didn't have, you know, portable microphones till the second season, and Venice High School tried to run that theater, and they couldn't run it. And that is the beginning of the VPAM, and the Hartleys coming in with their generosity and expertise. Mike Hartley has a lot of experience in theater and arts and, and really putting together a 501(c)(3) to run that theater. I mean, Eric Jackson has said to me many times, I wouldn't be able to do this. We had like a SPP 7 and, you know, it just didn't work. And the first year, it brought people to their knees. So I think we have to start looking at these theaters a different way, Mitzi. And I think that we have to, you know, be very thoughtful in some, of some of the things that we're doing, because they are a draw for our students, and they're wonderful professions. And, and, you know, it's just, we're not, we're not running this part of our business properly. So that's my thought right now. And I'm not ready to say I don't support it, I've got to find out more information, and I will do that.
One of the things that we have to keep in mind is that it's cheaper to build from scratch than it is to renovate. And that's what some of this cost in this rebuild is, because we have to renovate before we build. And, and what I see is that anything that's sports-wise, we do it. We did the new fields, we did, we're doing Riverview now. Riverview has its own baseball field over by STC. We did career and technical, but we have not really paid enough attention to the arts. The only reason that we have Northport and Venice is because the city's chipped in. But that's, that's part of our responsibility, because this Booker High School in particular, that's a teaching school. Their theater program is a teaching theater. I agree with Da, I know David Jones has talked to me many times about wanting a theater. So let's do Booker, and then let's put Sarasota High School online. We've given Sarasota High School a new gym, a track. I mean, we've done a lot of things with Sarasota High School. So maybe it's time to look at Booker and, and see what needs to be done. Yes, Bridget?
I absolutely can share your passion and enthusiasm. I get it. I, I hope, I truly, I mean, looking futuristic, I mean, I would be more inclined to want to invest this right away, because I want my daughters to go there, because I think it is amazing, and I think it is absolutely something that attracts people to this area, and what comes out of there is phenomenal. So I don't want my, my comments to be misunderstood of. I support that, but I really, I like what Jane said and what Erica said is, I, I'd like to see this. I think, I was getting technical about, I need, understanding how it got here, because again, you put it in a tough position where I have this in front of me, I don't want it to be that I don't support it, but I have to make sound fiscal decisions, so we have to figure, we have to weigh a lot of different things. I think Jane had a lot of involvement with the VPA, and she brought up a really good point about if you do go down this path, like, there's also another investment of making sure staff understands the expertise to do it, because you protect your investment, and that's the, you know, but, so there's a lot of different moving parts to it. I, I would, I think it's, I would like to see addition, and again, even when I talk about the track at Oak Park, my biggest concern is, I want us to be thoughtful about where we're spending our money right now, because I think things, the tides can change, but, or they may not. So I'm not, and I, but I also think it's helpful to have some foresight. I mean, we can't be terrified to do anything. I just, I just am cautious about certain expenditures. My request would be that we come back and revisit this after there may be some discussions, or even give Dr. Shelley, I don't know if we give their authority or whatever, to lobby on behalf of the district to see if you can get additional funding to support this. And then, because yes, if you do, doing things in phases may be the only option. Doing things all at once can be less expensive, but if you don't have that money, you don't have that money. So I mean, I could talk about renovating my house, I want to do all this because it's cheaper, but if you don't have the money to do it right then, you just don't have the money. So I, and that's our responsibility as we look through this too. So I, in my opinion, I think there needs to be a little bit more discussion. I would love to hear what Dr. Shelley had. I mean, I don't know, Mitzi, if that, does she need authority to go out and, I mean, if, or is the board need to say, this is something we're interested in to this level, but we can't commit to that amount of money, can you find matching dollars? I mean, I'd love some input or direction, but I can tell you, I think it's too soon, that, that amount is, that right now is something, while I believe it would be absolutely beneficial, I also think it, it could be detrimental at the same time.
I'm not sure, I'm just trying now. Have Bridget-
Paul, we can't hear you.
Can't hear you, Paul. When the, when the $700 project, when we started moving forward with design and some of these additional needs came up, one of the things we wanted to do was make sure we weren't going to do anything in the current project that would have to either be redone or not support perhaps some of this additional work in the future. So that's kind of where we went down the road to the master plan, and what we've done is just taken that master plan and put dollars to it, you know, for, for the presentation today. Obviously, you know, it can be done in pieces, it can be done. We, we just wanted to make sure that if we move forward with the $7 million piece, that we weren't going to have to rework something down the road if there was an additional need in the building or something for the program. So that's kind of how this thing came about and got the numbers put through the thing.
So, so Paul, so let me, so let me ask a question just for clarification. So I, I would think, I guess what I'm hearing a little bit of is that the board would like to investigate a little bit more, possibly seek some funding from, from, from Sarasota, City of Sarasota, or some other entity that may partner with us. So having said that, I think what we would do then is, is kind of reassess exactly what we're doing, and some parts of this project we may hold off on at this point, just waiting for that final decision about what the, what the overall end of the, end of life of this project's going to look like. For example, the new entrance from, from the courtyard, I think that's one of the things we would hold off on, because the ultimate project moves the whole entrance around to the other side of the building. So, so if that's what we're going to do, and if that's the will of the board, we continue to explore, we'll have to put the brakes on some pieces of what we have going on there at this current point.
So if I could jump in quickly. So, so right now, I mean, when we built STC, the rebuild of STC, the entire, it was phased the north. It was phased as STC, well, and Paul would know, he did it, phase one, phase 1A, phase two, and I actually think there was a phase three at one point. So phase one, I think, was SPHS, and then 1A2 was what we borrowed for, which was the renovation of a certain area. And then three, we actually, because we went into such a strong recession, construction prices dropped enough, we were actually to get that, able to fund that with the existing capacity of that bond that we had issued. So, so to me, I kind of see this project similar to that one where we could phase it. Because right now, based upon the original scope, while the updated scope, but not the ultimate updated scope, the $7 million budget scope, we're already $2.5 million over budget. Is that correct?
So, so Mitzi, in terms of the design that was presented at selection, which is by the architect that's been priced, that is correct?
Okay. So, so we would already have to ask for an additional $2.5 million to just do the original planned scoping. Then it could be phased into the next, you know, however long that would take, and then when that's completed, you could start the next scope, because you've master-planned the entire project, which is what we did with STC. So you master-plan the entire project, and then you phase it as you can afford it, if that's how you want to do it. So we could do that, that, that's an option. Again, construction prices may continue to rise, you're not locking in on a GMP, there's, you know, other options you could borrow. I don't know that you could necessarily borrow for this, because it isn't necessarily intended 100% for instructional purposes. So it may not be an adequate use of the 1.5 mils that repays that debt, but you do have classroom wings in other areas you could maybe roll into a borrowing to offset this. The, the ultimate question is, is that do you want to phase it to allow Dr. Shelley the opportunity to provide other outside funding to contribute to the process, or do you want to just fund it? I guess that's-
One, one of the things I, I think we need to be careful of is with the original $7 million. If we do, if we build to the $7 million cost, then the next phase, you have to be really careful how you phase it in, because some of the $7 million encompasses doing part of what would have to be redone in the whole plan.
Well, no, it would be master-planned so that you wouldn't have to redo anything.
Well, what we have in front of us now, that's what would happen. So I just want to make sure, surely, I'm sorry.
I'd, I'd like you to maybe take a sharper pencil to this, because, you know, when you look at what the base plan was, the base program, it says, I guess we were at 5, then it went to 7, and then, then on this list, it's like 79, 74 for the lobby expansion. But then on A4, new lobby, or is that the new lobby for the Black Box Theater? I'm, is that what it is?
Yeah.
But I would also, if you could break out those issues that are the ADA compliance things, you know, like that elevator and stuff, because I would imagine that, that's a costly endeavor, and maybe if we could break that out and show where we need that. And, and looking at joint use, I mean, I know there's a Sarasota Dance Company that particularly addresses this community, or maybe there's something else we could look at. And I know there's that, that company that leases our performing arts centers for concerts, and maybe we could reach out to them. And we were looking at perhaps changing the lease fees on those, because I'm thinking they're making money on it, we shouldn't be renting it out at cost. But I have some trepidation about putting on Dr. Shelley's shoulders to raise money for this, because she's raising money for scholarships and things like that. Like Revis, not Revis, Riverview has Ramboosters. Why couldn't they look to have a group of parent supporters and fundraisers, you know, for their arts program? And, you know, and, and have that, and I would think that would be something that would help not only this, but others. And it looks like there was theater box seats, I mean, maybe there's some naming options out there and everything. But, you know, maybe if, if, you know, she could reach out to some of the parents or some of the community members that could help lead this, because, you know, Dr. Shelley herself has her hands full just providing, you know, services for the students and then getting those scholarships out. So I don't want to say, Dr. Shelley, I want to put this on your shoulders, but I would hope that she could reach out and find some other people, or some other people might reach out to her to help get this done, because I would like to see a master plan so that we don't have to go back and fix it. And, and I would like to see us put effort into our arts programs like we do into our sports programs, but at the same time, be cognizant of the costs and, and any way that we can save in, you know, because of these times that we're in right now. So I appreciate you bringing this to us. I don't want it to be pushed off. You just tweaked a little and, and, you know, come back to us.
I like the idea.
What are the items like, Bridget?
What I like-
Paul, we can't hear you. You need to stay really close to your microphone.
All right. Sorry about that. The, the, Rita Head that had the presentation design, that will take care of, you know, the, obviously the 9.5 million would take care of all the safety and ADA concerns. Obviously, that takes in the major renovation of the existing theater with some add-ons. The other items that were broken out in your paperwork for the A2, A3, A4, and A5, they're the additional pieces. So what we've tried to do with this is, is do the master plan, so if we did do the presentation design, it would take care of all the safety issues and ADA issues in the theater proper. The additional items were things that would be added on that we would already know are coming, so we wouldn't have to do any rework if those items were to selected to move forward.
So Paul, am I correct, A3, A4, and A5 is all new space that doesn't exist currently? So it's not renovation?
That is correct.
A1, A2 is within the current theater proper?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just checking.
Except for the expanded lobby area, Mitzi, which is part of the original plan, is $7 million.
Correct, correct. That's pushing it out.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, the A4 lobby of Black Box-
Can't hear you, Paul. Paul! Waiting for-
That shifts the lobby.
Yeah, so again, like I said, if, if we're going to move in this direction, then we would ref, we would not, we would not start the lobby in the courtyard as currently planned. We'd probably hold off on that, because this, the ultimate scenario moves the whole lobby around to the backside of the building on the parking lot area that's the new Black Box Theater.
That, that's why I said you can't do it. You can't do it like that, by just doing what was put in there the first time. You can't do it like that, by just doing what was put in there the first time for the $7 million.
So I think if what we would do is, given the direction I'm kind of hearing, is we'd go back to the team and we'd say, "Listen, there is a, the board would like to move in the forward of the master plan. We'd like to continue to develop that master plan. We'd like to see if we can find some partnership with other community members who maybe can partner with some capital to move towards the ultimate master plan. But we'd like to proceed with the current project minus anything that's going to impact the ultimate plan for the building." So we would move forward with rigging and anything that has to do with lighting and sound. We'd get all of that upgraded so the customer's not waiting on those items. And then we'd plan for the ultimate build out of a lobby and a black box theater on the other side of the building.
But you can't do the...
What Paul was saying, we change our current project a little bit to make sure we did not impact the ultimate master plan.
But you can't do the sound because the sound would be moved up to the mezzanine if the new, if the revised plan is in place. So you'll be doing the sound, and then it gets moved up to the mezzanine, and you'll have to redo it again.
Well, we certainly have to have the team take that into consideration as they're planning for, you know, again, we don't want to redo anything. So whatever that would look like in terms of systems, we'd let the team figure that out. But the ultimate goal would be, whatever we put in, we do not want to redo it again with the master plan.
So Caroline...
If that's the direction we took.
Right. So it may be that what you have originally planned is expanded to include, so it would be A1, A2. So it includes the enhanced mezzanine and the additional seating capacity. So that becomes, A1, A2 becomes the new base project that you have currently in place. And then all of the new spacing becomes maybe Phase 2.
Well, if I remember this correctly, if I remember this correctly, they're going to lose seating in the first phase. And the second phase is they're going to get the seating back again by doing the mezzanine.
But that's what I said. We would maybe incorporate the mezzanine component of it, which increases the seating capacity to 475 within the scope of the current project. So it may be that your scope of your current project's now going from $7 million to $10 million. But at least you're not having to worry about having to redesign or worry about having to put off your sound systems because you want to move them upstairs from having them downstairs. You just incorporate the upstairs component so that you can get that in there.
But can the board have, which I think I'm hearing, can the board have a master plan? And then do it piecemeal? Bridget?
Well, I'm going to answer. We couldn't do master plans.
My answer is yes, we could certainly do that. And I think the team has started to lay that out again in sketch, in sketch design for you. I think we absolutely can say, okay, given the board direction, we want to ultimately add these, add this additional square footage to the building. What does that look like in a phased approach with matching funding? So I think we can do that. Again, what we have to do is just go back and reassess exactly what we're doing under the current budget. Maybe come back to you to make sure we can include the enhanced mezzanine so we don't lose the seating. And again, the reason we're losing the seating is because of the ADA upgrades. As we get into the project, as we have to upgrade access, we lose some seating. So maybe we come back to you with an enhanced base project like Mitzi was just talking about. And then, at the same time, say, step 2, step 3 would be adding this additional square footage as funding became available. So I think that's what I'm hearing. And so we'd come back to you again with more thinking, some more revised Phase 1, and maybe a request for a small additional funding to complete Phase 1.
That's correct, Jody. I just got off the phone with Ernie. And we would not go back, if we did A1, we would not go back and do A2 because it would be going back into the theater proper. What we would look at is that enhanced project for the first phase would be essentially A1 and A2. Which would take into account all the renovations and changes to the theater proper. Then the addition of the classrooms, the black box, the ticket employer area would be done at a later date or to be phased in because it would be outside of the theater proper.
So basically...
That's all done on the other side. So that would not impact. You're right, that's all on the other side. So that would not impact.
So based on the pricing that's in here, we're looking at about 10.3, kind of, if we were to do A1, A2 with the design?
You know, I wish I had eight.
Yes.
Okay. Because you said 9.5 on the existing current project. We know that another $850,000. So we're at $10,000, $10,350.
It's actually more than that, Mitzi, if you go to the bottom of that page.
Okay, how much more?
Can I just add something very quickly? Because I think this, I mean, personally, I think there's more, clearly, there's more discussion. I think that even from the, you know, the Gantt chart, if you look at it here, I think, having heard from the board, and I guess, and I totally agree with what Shirley said, so I'm glad you said that, that I don't want it to be put on Dr. Shelley's shoulders to go out there and find that. I just want, my point is more or less, we support the bigger mission of this, but there are some areas of concern. We have done master planned projects in the past contingent upon whether funding was available, very similarly to STC South and North, as you indicated. And so I don't even know from this, based on our discussion today, I mean, when we were talking about A1, A2 and not disrupting seating, I mean, is there a different design that where there, so we're not, again, going from starting at 3, understanding, change the scope, go to 7? I mean, I'm having some memories of other projects, and I don't want that. Again, looking at our financial circumstance, we have to be cognizant of that. But, so is there perhaps even a different design that would, that would address the concerns? And then still, like, allow us a master plan to utilize in phases? Maybe it doesn't have to be the one that's in front of us that wouldn't be as disruptive. Because now we're going from 3 to 7 to 10 point, no, 9.5, 10.3, and then maybe even higher than that. So I think that we just need to come back to this, but...
I think it would be very helpful, I'm not sure if Jody would agree, but sometimes it's very helpful if we have a ceiling on what we think we can do for Phase 1.
Right.
In terms of budgetary dollars. Because then you are able to put the pressure back on the architects to make sure that they've got the design in place that will meet your budgetary requirements. So again, like he had said, normally, this came in at 7.9 for whatever it is. We had a budget of 7. That's when you go back to the drawing table and go, "Well, that's really great, but this is all you have to spend. What are we going to get accomplished?" So I think if we could, you know, we can still have more discussions on this, obviously. But if we could get some kind of, you know, ceiling on what it is so that we know we do not want to go beyond this today, understanding that the new components will be in the future, and we can program that in, you know, to the plan, once the master plan is completed, it would just be very helpful for us to know, know more than this, too.
I would like to see the master plan, but I would also like Dr. Shelley to be here so that if we have questions that I'm hearing, she could answer these questions instead of, I mean, providing she wants to be here, she could help us answer these questions that we're struggling with. Do you agree?
I'd also like to know where the money's coming from, what impact it's going to have on our budget.
We have, yes, that's very important. And I don't want people to think I'm not cognizant of that. But we have the ability to borrow, but money is cheap right now. Interest rates are very cheap. And we have, we're nowhere near what our borrowing capacity is. Nowhere near it. We've been very good at not borrowing, even what the state allows. We're not even up to that. I'm not even sure if we're up to our own cap on the borrowing that we've done. So we just have to figure out what it is. How much is it? Do we want to do it?
And what is the financial impact?
Yeah.
Ms. Suck, are you okay with me? I totally support this.
Well, I'm just making sure that I include you in conversation.
Okay, I actually am very, very close to where you're at. I think it should, I actually think we should do it one time. I'm not a big fan of the piecemeal thing. I agree with you on that. I think it's penny wise, pound foolish to do it in piecemeals. It's more expensive. I'm actually in very agreement with you. And I think, I don't, hopefully, there's not a shadow between this part. I'm just asking for it to come back to explore the opportunity of going to the cities, doing some funding. So I think you and I are identical in this same place.
We are. We are, Eric. I'll even, no, I can't shake hands. I'll bump elbows.
So I guess what I'm hearing, and so just trying to bring it to a close, I guess what I'm hearing is that there is consensus that we want to do something there. We're not sure exactly what. We want to ultimately have a master plan, and we probably want to somehow phase that in depending on the funding. Let us work a little bit more based on the conversation we had today. And then, as time allows, on next month's workshop, if we can get, if we can get some more of this worked out, maybe we'll come back and have more conversation with you about what that might look like. Does that make some sense?
Could we, could we have a phase in or an all-in? I mean, the two ways that we could look at it?
Two scenarios.
Plus...
Because right now, I know that there are, I'm sure that there are three board members that are supporting this. I don't know where the other two are, but I have three board members that are supporting...
I'm sorry. I think all five of us want to see this move forward. There's a financial impact, and I think what Shirley just said is very well thought out as that, because hearing what Eric says, like, he likes the all-in. There are some elements, but how do you come up with the funding? So if you can look at two options and bring that forward, maybe we'll be a little bit more clear. But, I mean, again, the irony of the 3-2 stuff, I think trying to build consensus, I think, brings us to a better place. And I want Dr. Shelley to know she's supported by this board.
Oh, yeah. I've heard that from everyone, that she's supported. And I'm sure she has. I know she's watching. All right. That's it for now?
For 10 minutes.
We have 10 minutes to have lunch.
Eight minutes to discuss impact fees.
Impact fees, I apologize.
So we have one more, we have one more item.
I thought that was later.
How you want to handle that?
It's now.
Oh, it's now, okay. I'm not hungry, so...
Is it, go ahead, Jody, really quick.
Go ahead, Jody.
So what's the consensus? Do we want to talk about impact fees now? Do we want to proceed to that discussion?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we'll do that. So Mickey, I don't know if your mic is fixed here, but let's talk through impact fees a little bit. So again, at the request of the board, it was requested that we come back and talk a little bit about options for impact fees, kind of what we've done, where we've been, what we might do in the future. So as part of that process, Mickey, thank you, Mickey, for a ton of work. She has provided in the read ahead a bunch of items for you to kind of look through in terms of the conversation today. So Mickey, let's see how your mic works. Do you want to take them through quickly, what those, what those were in the packet?
Sure. I fixed the problem. Anyway, I just provided what I thought you would need in the history, the impact fee history. Thought it was important that you saw where we started and where we are now. So that synopsis of the impact fee history is pretty self-explanatory. The second item was where we are in regards to other counties, school districts in this state, fee-wise. That table, the impact fee schedule comparison. It is updated as of December of last year, so it's very current. It shows you the adoption percentage, the amount that was adopted, and what the 100% fee rate would be at all those counties. I also provided you an impact fee history, kind of what we've collected since the beginning. And I just thought that would be good, so you could see by municipality and local government what we collect. And also the current statute that is in place, the impact fee statute. And then, of course, our adopted ordinance that we are currently working under. So it gives you a history, where we are statutorily, what it says, the ordinance, kind of gives you a lot of information. So if you have any questions about any of that information, I'll try to answer them.
Thank you, Mickey. And so again, our goal for this morning is to kind of provide the information and then listen to the board and take some direction in terms of what you would like to do with impact fees.
I would like to point out, I'm looking at that comparison sheet that you put together, and thank you very much for that. And looking at that, I see that Sarasota County is, A, the lowest one in the adopted percentage of what it was recommended. And we are the highest in the difference between what the 100% fee would be and what the cost is for a single-family dwelling. They say it should be 7,800, and we're charging 2,032. And I look at Manatee County, they're at 100%, and they're charging $6,000 per, $6,127 per single family. And I don't think that stopped construction up in Manatee County. You know, there's other counties that, you know, like Indian River is at 28%, and they're $1,700. I don't know what the building is there. But we are one of the lowest counties in impact fee dollars. And when we're way below what they said, you know, I think maybe we need to look at it again. That's my two cents.
I think our multifamily is way too low. I think multifamily is really, really too low.
And I saw Bridget first, right? Bridget? All right, Eric?
Again, I have to say, you know, I somewhat agree with Ms. Brown. I think it is something, I have no problem about us looking at it. I have no problem about us going out and doing a study. My only caveat is, is I prefer somebody who, besides the person, the last person did the study, that one was, that one we discovered now was full, was full of errors. I mean, just, I would prefer us to look at somebody who did the study for Manatee County School Board. They recently had their impact fee study that you referenced earlier. The company that did the Sarasota County impact fee study, I'd be more than amenable. I just, I just have a problem with the study of the person who did it last time. But absent that, I am open to having a study, open to reviewing it, open to, you know, revisiting the situation and seeing where we're at. And I'm open to all that. I just want to make sure that it's a study that I can trust and verify and believe in. Because the one who did it last time, I would have, I would have very little confidence in.
Thank you.
And it's going to cause a lot of problems if we did that.
Thank you. Jane?
Is that fair?
Well, I know that in looking at Manatee Counties, they charge a lot more for multifamily use than we charge. I mean, I wonder why we charge such a low amount. And that's one area that I think needs, we really need to look at because there are a lot of condominiums and so forth that are coming available in this county. But I agree with Eric. I think that we need to look at a study and go forward with this, see where it leads.
Yeah, no, I agree. I think, well, thank you for this background information. I think it was really helpful and valuable. I agree as well. I mean, a study to evaluate where we're at, I also agree. I did believe, as I voiced this back in, I don't know, was it 15 or 14 when we had the study, that there were provisions or, you know, predictions on the last study that were a little, I found to be a little aggressive. I'm talking, hello? And that, and since then, our, I mean, it's proven to be true. It's not me, I'm not tooting my own horn. I just, I think it's important if we have a strong study to feel as though it's giving us a good directional information as to what to do. So I will, yeah, I support doing a study.
So what I've heard, and to fill in our chair, there seems to be consensus that on a new study, perhaps, I think regardless, we have to put it out to bid. But somebody other than the one who did it the last time, especially asking the ones from Manatee County to look into ours, and...
Or the one who did Sarasota County.
Oh, the county.
The county, Sarasota Counties and Manatee County School District.
Okay.
They're two different people, two different, they're two different districts. But they're also two different...
We can't make them, but what we do is we put it out to bid after...
Right, right. But I'm just saying the companies who did those studies, the one who did Sarasota County obviously knows Sarasota County and probably...
Well, when the bids come back, we'll keep those in mind.
So when we, if it's the consensus of the board for us to undertake an impact fee study, we will begin the process of an RFP. We will make sure that the RFP is sent to those who have done the Manatee County and the Sarasota, Manatee County School, Sarasota County Government, impact fee studies, and to whomever else would like to also respond.
And thank you. And I'd like to thank Mickey again. You do a terrific job. You always get all the information together we need and even stuff we didn't know we needed. And I really appreciate you. Thank you. And I turn it back over to the chair to...
Thank you. Okay. Is that it?
Ready for lunch?
Is that it?
Ready for lunch? Kids, you want to... Push it off, wait a minute.
Yes.
What time are we down? We're only going to break until 12:30, it's 12:30 now, we'll break 12:30 anyway.
Okay.
12:31, gotcha. Everybody's turning the lights off.
Okay.
No, it's going to... I was just thinking, you just do this. That way, nobody...
This one is, this one is still on.
No, it stays on. It's turned off. It's supposed to stay on, at least to my knowledge, I don't even know if that button works. Yeah, it's supposed to stay on.
No. They basically, they, they're looking out for...
I'm actually going to, I have to go right near him, so if, if you want to leave it there, I'll grab it.
I'll put my seat, I just got me some phone calls. We need to get them. Oh. The speaker's in the bathroom. I talked about... Well, they, no one said to come back out. I'm going to go where the stand, the whole construction staff is really headed, and if it's more of a... Their number is, their number is... It's in this van. Yeah, it's hot. Eric?